I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rusty Cheney?
Here.
Rusty Foster?
Here.
Mayor Newhart?
Here.
Rusty Bachman?
Here.
Rusty McKnight?
Here.
Stephen Gaba?
President.
Mike Mojer?
Here.
Tonight, I'm afraid I have to start with some sad news. The tendrils of hatred as we know it and have seen are far-reaching. Ruth Whitfield, a former Warwick resident and member of the Union African Methodist Episcopal Church, was a victim in the recent shooting in Buffalo. Sister Ruth was a long-term member of Union Warwick. The Whitfields had retired to California but returned to New York to be near family. Ruth was 86 years old and the mother of former Buffalo Fire Commissioner Garnell Whitfield. Sister Ruth was visiting her husband in a nursing home, as she did each day, and had stopped by the supermarket to buy some groceries, a simple act that ended in tragedy. This is a moment of great sadness for the Whitfield family, the Union family, and the families and friends victimized by this devastating act. We mourn as a country and we mourn as a community. Let us bow our heads for a moment of silence to express our compassion for those we lost and for their families who have endured this loss and this great tragedy. Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the minutes of March 21st, 2022, April 4th, 2022, and April 18th, 2022?
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to accept the following reports: April 2022, the Clerk's Office, the Justice Department, planning and zoning; Building Department, Department of Public Works; and March 2022, Building Department report.
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of $217,355.01.
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under announcements this evening, I will give that first cue to you, Carly, as part of the park liaison.
Okay, great, thank you. So we're going to have a listening session at Memorial Park on May 22nd, starting at 10:00 a.m. at the Memorial Park Pavilion. It'll go from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. If folks can't be there the entire time, then they're welcome to come at sort of the beginning or the end. We are going to take a tour around the park, a guided tour, and talk about the different areas, and we'll have an opportunity to provide both written and verbal feedback that can be used in the development of our Memorial Park master plan. We'll also talk about the history of the park.
We will, yes. And this is a prelude, this is really, truly, the ground floor of just outreach to the public. We haven't formed a committee yet. We are, tonight, on our agenda is to hire a landscape architect, but we're moving forward. We have, we, to frame it, we did have a master plan that was created about 12 years ago. And sadly, the recession came and it never came to fruition, and it was very complex and expensive. And so the desire is to look at that plan, to look at what is approachable, reachable, but also to recognize that things have changed in these number of years as far as recreation needs for our community. So that's the thrust of it, and I'm looking forward to it. So we'll go from there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And Raina, Village of Warwick Tax Collection?
Yeah, there we go. So I'll just read the notice. Notice is hereby given that the 2022-2023 Village of Warwick tax roll and warrant have been delivered to the Village of Warwick for the collection of taxes levied on such roll. The Village of Warwick tax payment schedule is as follows: June 1st to July 1st, no penalty; July 2nd to July 31st, 5% penalty; August 1st through August 31st, 6% penalty; September 1st through September 30th, 7% penalty; October 1st to October 31st, 8% penalty; and after these dates, village taxes are payable to the Orange County Commissioner of Finance and GoShion from November 1st through November 15th. And unpaid taxes after November 15th will be relevied onto the January County Town Tax Bill. You can pay at villageofwarwick.org online. Their fees do apply, or you can pay by mail, or the secure night drop located in the front of Village Hall, or of course you can pay in person during regular business hours from 8:30 to 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Raina. And what is not on the announcements, but I would like to mention, this coming Wednesday evening, May 18th, at 6:00 p.m., we will be, volunteers will be congregating at the DPW barn in Memorial Park to plant the pots for the downtown area. And so all are invited. If you could call the clerk, 986-2031, and tell us if you're coming or not, that would be a little bit easier for us, so we can manage how many people we have. We're doing this in conjunction with the Warwick Valley Gardeners, so they're going to have a crew there. And the only thing we request is that you bring a hand trowel and gloves, if you need gloves. It's 60 pots, so it's a bit of work, but it goes fast. And all the trustees are invited, of course. Okay. Under discussion this evening is a discussion that has been kind of rolling. So, and that is the potential waiving of the facility use fees and security deposits for the following entities: schools, scouts, fire department, police department, ambulance corps, and veterans organizations. And it's up now, maybe a little bit of the history, and Cory, please correct me, because you worked on this, as well as Raina, but you, we redid the facilities use permit, and it's much more articulated, and it, and in the past, there have been fees that have been waived, but there was, it was never a policy, it was never written down. So, in essence, with the new facilities use application form, it is sort of the level playing field for everyone. And so the request has come from some members of the fire department for it to, now this would only, to waive the fee really would only be for large events, and could you just correct me on that, or what that number, what that threshold is?
So we have, for gatherings under 200, there is a facility, there is a security deposit of $200. There is no fee.
Right.
For gatherings over $200, there, I'm sorry, over 200 people, there's a $500 security deposit and a $250 application fee.
Okay.
And the security deposits are refundable?
That's correct.
Provided there's no damages?
Yes.
That aren't fixed?
So the, really, the only, at large, large events are, I would say, not the fire department, I mean, not the scouts, or the schools, even though they have picnics, they don't really...
Well, some of their, I guess some of their picnics are larger, depending on the larger classes.
Oh, really? Okay.
But...
Or they've combined classes, I guess, yeah.
But I think the request from, what I'm seeing is for the security deposit and the fees to be waived regardless of the application size.
Okay.
For just the schools or for the fire department?
For the schools and the fire department. For example, if you remember, the season started with a coin drop, and they did end up just paying the security deposit, the fire department, but did question if it said, you know, we need to get this on, we're just going to pay it. But their cover letter did say in the future if the security deposit could be waived. So that was a small gathering. Right. And then the school has asked, of course, them to be waived.
Can I ask why, so I know previously when we were talking about the different entities, we had talked about sort of the schools, the fire department, police department, and I think the ambulance corps, but it looks like the scouts and veterans organizations have been added to that? Can we talk about how that?
That happened from a phone conversation with the town. I asked them who they waived, and those two organizations were part of it.
Did they explain why they waived those, even though they're not municipal?
No, they did not.
Okay, they don't, okay.
Is that part of their code that mentions this?
No, I don't, I think it was through the clerk's office.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's just practice?
Just practice.
So it kind of seemed like what we had before, before we did the revision, which was this informal, you know, we'll exempt you.
Yeah.
But there was nothing, a formal policy written down?
No.
Oh, if I may, I don't need to interrupt.
No.
I'm troubled by the scouts, not that I love the scouts, don't get me wrong, and the veterans organizations, same thing, being added to this. As I'm sure you're all aware, there's a constitutional provision prohibiting gifts of public funds. That doesn't apply to government, to government agency or even quasi-government agency. So you can certainly waive it for, you know, the police, the fire department, schools, some of their private schools. You know, probably the ambulance corps, I don't think there would be a problem with that. But the veterans organizations and the scouts are private organizations, and if some other privatization came along and said, well, gee, you waived it for them, why would you...
No, that makes sense, you know, it's, I think I was just responding to what the town did or does. Frankly, the scouts don't really have many activities, you know, that would merit, you know, that they would need it, so that's not really so much an issue.
I've seen fees waived for private groups when the purpose they're undertaking is, the action they're taking is viewed with some public purpose. If they're holding food drive, if they're holding a pickup to dispose of dangerous chemicals, if they're, you know...
Right.
There's some way you can say, hey, we're linking this into, you know, a public purpose, the municipality might, you know, sponsor, then you could say, you know, we're going to waive it because they're undertaking, it's almost like a contractual arrangement, they're doing this, and so we're going to waive that. But to just give it as a blanket, I, you know, it's kind of a nitpicky thing.
No, no, it's...
Can we clarify, do we mean public schools? Okay. Okay. That was my question as well, because it does seem like the, you know, we had talked previously about gifts to private organizations, and it seems like a slippery slope there.
It does, yeah.
Also, are true.
So, to add my two cents here, I strongly believe that the public schools and emergency services should be exempt from any of these fees or deposits. That's my opinion. In particular, if you think about the Fireman's Carnival, I'm appreciative that they choose the village to hold this event. I think it's good for our community, so that's where I stand.
Yeah. And I think the important thing, too, to recognize about the schools is it's very difficult for them to come up with a deposit. Each school teacher or, you know, it's just, you know, they can't go to the school's treasury and get a check, so it does make just kind of sense.
So what are we talking about in the way of revenue? How many applications are there going to be if we give these exemptions that would qualify for being required to pay the $200? The $500 security deposit, you're getting that back anyway, so...
Right.
That's not a significant impact on the organization.
So really, I mean, we're talking about the Fireman's Carnival, so that's just...
Well, no, we're exempting them. We're talking about exempting them.
Right, but if we weren't...
Right. If we weren't, right, that would be the revenue, it would be their $250 application fee. And then the fire departments, they're talking about holding the field games this year, that might be more individuals, so again, there would be the fee, and...
And the police are actually talking about a large event?
In August.
In August, so...
How many days is the, sorry? And you have youth football and youth baseball softball as well that are over 200?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I thought you were meaning just to add to this list.
No, 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 no.
Sure.
I meant total.
So, total, so the large events would be Apple Fest, the Apple Fest Carnival, because that's a separate application through the community center. We would have, yes, all the leagues that use Memorial Park, they're all over 250, 200 people, I think except for kickball, I think, I can't recall, but, and then what else? We have some events happening in Railroad Green, but those are under 200, so mostly the activities in Memorial Park besides Apple Fest.
So, I mean, this isn't, we're not doing this to gain revenue. This is an effort to, I think, recognize the fact that when we get to that size and the intricacies that are involved, that that's where we feel it's important to have a fee. And my understanding of discussions over the past many years is that probably the two most difficult ones are Apple Fest and the carnival, because there are a lot of moving parts. You know, the carnival has the rides, they have to go through a lot of vendor certificates of insurance, you know, there's quite a bit involved, and it's quite a burden on the office here to process that, to chase down the information, to make sure it's all in the right order, to make sure our insurance company has looked at it so that they're satisfied that we have the coverage we need. So, whereas, you know, some of the other ones that are the same size, very little effort is involved.
Going back to the veterans, though, so Memorial Day, do they have to do a facilities use permit for that?
They do, and that we've required that, and we've also required the security deposit. They've given it, I mean, they have requested it be waived, maybe to Steve's point, maybe that could be co-sponsored by the village or something, if you wanted to look into maybe waiving that.
Well, in my mind, it is a community event that is, you know...
Why couldn't the fire department, if they're granted exemption, just do the permit for the entrance to Memorial Park? Because the, most of what goes on there has to do with the Fireman's Memorial and the wreaths at the Fireman's Memorial.
I would think that if you wanted to amend your schedule of fees, you could write in exceptions for certain events, provided however, no fee shall be charged for Memorial Day use of the field by any, not of any veterans group, you couldn't just, you know, but if you made there was no fee, then there wouldn't be an issue of waiving it. But you'd have to carve out specifically what dates and what occasions you're going to have free time at the park, and you could limit it to certain types of celebrations.
And that, so we, so I'm really comfortable with the idea of exempting government services and also government service events specifically. Memorial Day is an example of, like, that's, that's like a, that's a federal holiday, that's a very important public event.
Right.
That's where I'm, that's where I'm comfortable.
I don't want to diminish what this office goes through for those big applications, but if we're playing around with this, exempt this one, don't exempt that one, look at this, don't look at that, maybe we should just think about getting rid of the application fee altogether. Something like the fire department, the carnival, how many days does a carnival go on?
I think, I think it's four days.
More than one.
The 22nd to the 26th.
So they would only need one application?
That's right.
And they'd only pay one security deposit and one application fee?
Yes, that's correct.
Over a couple of days?
So Barry, were you going, by asking how many events, right, seven, eight, right, times $200, you're making the point that it's not a significant revenue generator for the village?
It's not, it's not intended to be, it's, it's a, it's a recognition that if someone makes an application for, an event that big, that it puts a lot of burden on Village Hall to process it, make sure everything's correct, get it reviewed by the individuals that need to review it, who support us, and, you know, I think that it was, it was well-grounded in, during the development. But at the same time, now that we're starting to play around with exemptions, that maybe the cleanest thing to do is just say, you know, no application fee, and, you know, just, you know, get the security deposits. And if we want to exempt some of the security deposits, we exempt some of the security deposits.
But then we're in that same place, it's only with security deposits.
The slippery slope of security deposits, yeah. Okay, now, now there's a conundrum. Thanks, thanks, Barry.
So do we exempt, is that, would we exempt both the fees and the security deposits? Because then we have to have a mechanism, I mean, unless the, and then it needs to be written in such a way that, like, you know, damages and costs?
Well, security deposits do have a meaning. You know, just in the same, you know, after Earth Day, when I called Wickham Works and said, there's garbage all over the place, to find out that it wasn't their fault, but, you know, there are things that are, you know, have to be recognized that we...
And with the Fireman's Carnival especially, you get some rain and the ground gets dug up, and they're excellent. They, the fire department has taken care of it with the carnival operator, whenever that's happened, you know, they've, you know, taken responsibility for it and they fixed it. So, you know, I don't have a, I don't, I don't have a concern at all that their obligations aren't going to be met, whether the security deposit or not.
The other thing, too, is that I just wasn't thinking, as, you know, being on the spot, but the library, of course, Children's Book Festival is quite large now, and we have the 5K now that's even bigger this year for the Historical Society. I think all the events are growing, the Juneteenth celebration, that's on the application.
That's right.
They're expecting just under, but I think every year that's going to grow, so...
Well, and then we have private citizens, though, that need, you know, that ask for use of the facilities occasionally, and that requires a security deposit.
I mean, the Masons have been on hiatus with their lobster bake for a couple of years, so, I mean, we haven't heard anything about this year, but...
I heard it was canceled this year.
Okay. But we don't know, that could come back in the future, and that's certainly over 200.
We also don't have a motion in front of us, we're still discussing.
We're still under discussion, yeah.
So what would be the cons of waiving both the use fees and the security deposits? What's the risk associated with that? We've established that most organizations that use the facilities, there's a, there's a really good relationship that they're, you know, if there's something wrong, they make it right. And then, so then, I guess, that risk would leave, would leave risk for unknown organizations and then private citizens, and has that been a problem in the past?
No, not that I can think of. Mike, can you recall any applications, I think, that we kept the security deposits? No. I think it was just a film permit, Nestle's or something.
Yeah.
Right? There was a big mess of confetti.
The security deposit does two things for you. The first is that, of course, you have a ready pool of money there in case you incur additional costs or cleanup or something like that. It's not that big a concern when you have a municipal entity on the other end, because they have a relatively deep pocket, they can always come to the money one way or another. Not so much for private entities. And even something I hate to be, but like the Girl Scouts or something like that, there may just not be any money there in the event that we're going to bring a lawsuit against them or something. And that leads to the other thing that it does. Even if you have a deep pocket who's provided a security deposit, who could answer damages in the event that you have to call upon it, you can incur legal fees in pursuing a claim like that, which will far exceed the amount that you're looking to recover for the cleanup. So you don't want to be in a position where you have to chase after or bring a lawsuit against whoever it is who, you know, used the property. If they posted a security deposit, you don't have to worry about any of that, you just take the money to clean up, refund them whatever, if anything, is left at the end of the day. So, I mean, that's what you're risking when you get rid of your security deposits. One, if it's private individuals, you're just never going to see that money, at least it's highly unlikely. And two, in the event that you, and it hasn't happened yet, but I mean, it could. You get into a dispute with whoever it is who posted it, gee, you tore up that grass, no, we didn't, it was somebody else, you know, well, you say it wasn't, we say it was, we're taking the money, you don't like it, you can sue us, you know? So, I mean, that's, the security deposit has got a lot of advantages. The fee itself, you know, you can go back and forth, that's, like you say, for something large, you're going to put a huge strain on Village Hall, something smaller, maybe not so much, and it's not a big source of income, so that's probably what you're looking to change, and I don't know that you want to do anything with security deposits.
Right.
The larger events, I think, too, when we were talking about this from the very beginning, the, there is involvement with the DPW, right? Like, for example, just because it just happened, Earth Fest, it seems that maybe the DPW is going to have to be on staff to clean up that day, so you're talking at three hours of overtime. Not that the application fee would cover that, but at least it would be a portion of it, and I think that was also a discussion, because these larger events require manpower from the village, too, not just the administrative manpower.
Right. Okay, gang, it's your pleasure.
Certainly on my end of accepting the applications, it would be very, if I had a clear list, that would be very helpful.
Right. So I think there's a number of ways we can go. We can go with the removal of all fees and security deposits, or we can retain the security deposit and eliminate all, all application fees, or we can do the same, but just remove the application fees for a select group of municipal entities. Or do nothing.
I'm in the second camp.
Do you want to go around the room?
Sorry, I'm in the second camp. I believe security deposits serve a purpose.
Yes.
The application fee, if one of them's exempt, all of them need to be exempt. If one of them's charged, all of them should be charged, so get rid of the application fee then.
Okay.
But the security deposit, I think, should stay in place.
But then, are you in favor of charging security deposits to the schools?
Yeah.
Should we go to each person?
Yeah, I don't know, but it's, so when the schools have been applying for these picnics and such, I mean, that has been an issue, because they just can't get that check.
Right, so, so what's been happening is that one of the teachers from one of, you know, one teacher from the second grade, one teacher from the third grade will come forward and they'll request a picnic with the, with the reindeer, and they fill it out themselves, and historically, the security deposit has been waived, it's just with this new application that they're saying, wait a minute, you know, and they like waived as opposed to putting out a personal check, because they would never get a security deposit from the district, at least it would take a lot of time. I think, I mean, I suppose we could ask the district to put these events together as one packet and provide one security deposit from the district, as opposed to having multiple motions or requests from every, every class?
That's the way the town handles it with Little League, and it rolls over year in and year out. So the deposit we made three or four years ago is just carried forward, they don't give us our check back or anything, it's been deposited somehow. I think we should look into that, and it would serve the purpose of the school, giving us one at the beginning of whatever year, and then it just stays there until they ask for it back.
I know the treasurer had some concerns over doing that, I don't, we'd have to ask her.
Yeah, I'm not sure she's talked to the town, the bookkeeper at the town, but I think that would be the proper way to do it. Hopefully, I'm not opening a can of worms here.
Yeah, really? They're already gifting the Boy Scouts, so I don't know.
Also, with the schools, some of their picnics, they don't even have greater than 200 people, and they're not really asking for exclusive use of the park, which in fact, then they wouldn't really need a permit to begin with. Just another twist on it. I don't want to make it too complicated for any organization and for my office, too.
Right.
Do we get a new certificate of insurance every time from the school district, or...
We keep one on file.
We've got one on file that covers, which is similar to what we might be able to do. We've got one on file that covers, which, which is similar to what we might be able to do with the security deposit.
So I, I'm still in the same camp that I started in, where I think that we should exempt government entities because we're basically charging ourselves, I think, because they serve that, like a municipal purpose. And then I think likewise, for events that the village would have to put on, if these guys were not there to do that, then there should be an exemption.
Would the library then, Carly, be part of the list too? Is that considered true?
Um, do you have a library district?
Yes.
Private library.
Library district.
Then yeah, absolutely.
If it's, I mean, I don't know what the bound, you know, but that's what I would, I would draw that box around. And so then the, you know, Memorial Day falls into that bucket. And maybe we would just need that list of, you know, what the municipal, the complete list of what the sort of municipal governmental service entities are and what the events are that we would be putting on if we didn't have them, you know.
Tom, what's your take?
Well, now I'm leaning towards not requiring application fees or security deposits. And potentially a section seven in the application where they agree to return the facility or the premise to the condition in which they found it. No real teeth, there were penalty there, except for the fact that we see the same organizations over and over again. So if one particular group just, you know, destroys the park, then.
We don't let them back.
We don't let them back. Let's consider it next time.
Yeah, that might be the, you know, the big family picnic of three hundred people that just wreak havoc on Memorial Park, so.
There may not even need a section seven, but of course, we have to see it because the, you're only seeing a portion of the application because the rest of it is the actual code that was implemented, which is like pages and pages long, which says, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, you know, that sort of thing.
Is it, is it clear to the applicant though?
Yes, they have to sign, that's what their, that one page is that they actually sign off on too. It's like their rules and requirements, the park rules and requirements they sign off on.
If you're vandalizing public property though, that sounds like we're getting into sort of criminal territory. So from that.
We've given them permission to be there.
Yeah.
But not to vandalize the property.
Well, it's not necessarily vandalism, it, it just could, they, they could just leave the garbage.
Oh, I know, but I'm saying if they van, if they, you know.
I think I'm of the school of um waiving all fees, but having security deposit. I think the security deposit has weight, does give us some leverage in the event that something happens. And um, and it gets returned, so that's, and uh, and I think, again, it's very hard. I think also administratively, it's very hard um to kind of say, okay, are, who are these people? Who are, you know, or, oh, the veterans are doing this event and it's really, you know, a, a national municipal, you know, important event. But then, you know, that's a guess, you know, or that's, you know, that's a judgment, you know. Uh, I mean, I guess we could try to figure that out, but I think it would be a lot cleaner by just, you know, we're not making a lot of money on it. And uh, it would, a lot of these nonprofits don't have a great deal of money. And, you know, they're just trying to make a, a great event and in some cases, many cases, raise funds for their, for their coffers. So that's where I stand.
So would that mean looking to do Barry's potential, you know, in order to avoid the hardship? So I'm assuming that we would have security deposits for everyone.
Right.
And that, you know, for the schools, for example, we would try to do something that.
We try to figure that out with them, yeah.
Yeah. So what if a, what if like they submit a calendar at the beginning of the year for all of their events, but then, you know, a second grade teacher in the middle of the year wants to do, you know, a picnic? Like, could they just like add it in?
Yeah, so we're, we're just talking about Park Avenue Elementary School.
Really?
That's all we're talking about. And it's right, it's right there. I mean, I don't see why they even need a permit, they can just walk down with the kids.
I think they want the assurance to know that nothing else would be going on.
But, but nobody has exclusive use of the park, that's the trouble. You know, they would, if um, if we are, we don't close the park or anything while their picnic is going on and schools are still in, so I don't know how busy it is, I'm sure there's lots of kids there still. They use the picnic tables, but they're not blocked off or anything, right, Mike, for the picnics there?
What about, like, is there somewhere close to Memorial Park that, I mean, not Memorial Park, but this is actually maybe a digression. But the, if there was picnic tables in the, because there's that whole area that's immediately adjacent to the school, that big giant field and everything.
Yeah, and when they have, they have a big um.
That's a playground.
Right.
So other classes use that. So if you were gonna take a class and go out there and take over that field, then you're gonna interrupt phys ed and recesses.
Right.
Okay.
But we don't receive any complaints about ever, like the picnics, that, you know, there were other kids or they couldn't use the tables. They, they just go down and have a great time and I think the kids sit anywhere and.
Yeah.
Wherever they can. I guess that's another option, waive the facility use permit application for Park Avenue picnics? I don't know.
Yeah. Or, or talk to the, to, the security deposit is what we're talking about. And, and I think it's just a matter of maybe a discussion with the school district and say, you know, can, can we, can you offer us something that would cover these, you know, kind of string of events that, you know.
Just keep it on file year after year.
Yeah.
Have a standing, well, and then what's to stop us from having that relationship with other entities? Where, if they, you know, they give us a security deposit and then we just hang on to it for their events?
I can see Sadie's head spinning.
Spinning, yeah.
I know that she was not a fan of holding on to security deposits year after year. And she is in touch quite often with the control in the town and she may have already had that conversation, but I don't, but I don't recall, so.
But even if they gave back to school at the end of the fall, I mean, you know, or whatever the, the end of the period is, at the, at the end of the semester, and they just gave another check for, for the security deposit, I, I, I don't see why that would be a problem.
Okay.
For each year, yeah.
Instead of just holding on to it and rolling in.
We're happy, yeah.
So Barry, where, where do you stand?
I'm moving parts.
That's true.
I, I think as far as the security deposit goes, um, I could see waiving it for the governmental entities. Um, I think it's important, you know, we're, we're dealing with a, a known field of participants, applic- applicants. And, and so what concerns me is what's out there that's unknown at, at this point in time. And um, so I, I, I think we need, we, we can't just waive the security deposit blanket for, for everybody. So I think it needs, it needs to, to be there. And, and as far as the fee goes, um, again, knowing the applicants that we have, I probably wouldn't have a problem doing that. You know, I, 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 and again, um, no disrespect to the office because, you know, they work very hard at, at, at dealing with these applications and it, and it does take time. So, you know, if we were to waive the application fees, I, I, I think maybe that's taking it a bit too far and that we should decide who should and should not be required to, uh, to have an application fee. And I think.
Barry, you're the one that, Barry, you're the one that brought this up. I just want to remind you, Barry.
But just now, did you mean an application fee at the end or a security deposit?
I was talking about application.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
So are you?
What about the security deposit then?
I think the security deposit should be there, except for the governmental entities.
That would solve it for the schools then, that would make it easy. It would, if you waived all the, if you waived the security deposit and the fees for the government agencies, including the schools, then that administratively would be less of a burden to, to my office. Um, and then the security deposits, I'm sorry, I don't know where you stand with the fees altogether, but.
I could get on board with that, like if we decide, either way, to me, is fine with the, if we choose not to do fees or stay with fees, but waive the governmental entities, that would be, and then security deposit, keep that, but not for governmental entities.
Okay, so let me get this straight.
Yeah, say that first, I'm sorry, say that first part again about the application fees.
I don't feel strongly about keeping or jettisoning the application fees, but if we do keep them, I am in favor of not charging governmental entities for them. And I agree with maintaining security deposits except for, for governmental entities.
So I think, so I've been trying to capture this, so I think you and Barry are saying the same thing.
I think so.
Right.
Except I am also fine with keeping the fee, but you were in favor of waiving the fee altogether.
At one point he was.
Oh, but you've changed your mind. We're on the same page.
You're on the same page.
I think that was posed as a question.
I was suggesting to waive everything. I think Corey's proposing to keep the plan as is and Mayor.
No, Corey was actually, uh, I don't want to.
No, I, I could say, uh, so I am okay with, um, I'm confused. Okay, so security deposit should be in place in my mind. And application fees, I, I think we would run into a problem by just saying, you know, this one gets exempt and this one. Yes, we know the field of entities, but events change and the numbers change of attendees. So I don't, I'm not comfortable with that.
So you're in favor of keeping the policy as is?
Or application fees done away with, right?
Okay, but security deposits maintained with no exceptions?
Of course, they get it back and it's to protect us.
That's just.
The village.
Okay, so um.
It's like a horse race.
You should see his shirt.
I have a matrix.
Great.
So if you separate the two, application fees, um, I think two were, uh, Mayor, I think, you are okay with not having application fees.
Right.
That's what I propose.
And Corey is too.
Corey is on the fence with that.
No, no, he's, I'm with that.
You're with that, okay. And then Carly and Barry are in favor with keeping the application fees with the exception for governmental services?
I, I, I'm ambi- ambivalent about the fee.
Okay.
With, but if we keep it, then we exempt governmental entities.
Understood.
Because we're charging ourselves, that's my perspective.
And then for the security deposit, um, I think Mayor, Trustee Chaney, Trustee Fosser, all in favor of keeping it with the exceptions of governmental services. Trustee Pockman, I think you're in favor of keeping the policy as written. And I was in favor of removing the security deposit. So I think I would be in the minority of that. So if you were to put this together, um, one possible route could be to waive the application fee, keep the security deposit with the exception of the governmental services. Did I capture that?
I would vote yay.
Yeah.
Or aye.
That sounds, I mean, I think that's where.
Right, to be specific, the.
Public schools, fire department, police department, ambulance corps, and then I guess we need to look at the library.
Hey, if you want to characterize them that way, well, a fire company is not municipal entity, a fire district is. A EMS corps is not a governmental entity unless it's sponsored by or doing work for a municipality.
It provides, it provides municipal services.
It's a town EMS. Their, their funds come from.
It's a district. If that's the case, then you're just fine with them.
Yeah, and the same with the fire department.
They're a part of a district.
It's, it is a district, but it's their own, their, it's not a municipal district, it's their own district.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
As long as it's a fire district, that's municipal, that's a company, not so much.
How would you describe the exceptions, public schools and emergency services?
Well, I think you can say municipal services, municipal entities, as long as you know what that means.
Okay.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like you have any municipal services around here that are private anyway, so not going to be an issue, I don't think.
My definition of a municipal service is something that if that entity wasn't there, we would have to fill it. Like, so like how would you, you know, we have to have fire service.
Yeah, but the municipal entity has a meaning, it's, it's got.
I know, I, yeah, I was just generalizing, that's fine.
Private entity does municipal thing, that doesn't make it a municipal entity.
But if, for example, and some, if someone showed up in the future, I guess we would have to revisit it then. But right now, it's not an issue because they're districts, okay.
So I think we've, we've commandeered through this. I think we have, um, you know, a basis of consensus. And so while we're starting our motions, uh, Tom, you can work on the motion.
Would it be two motions?
It would be two motions probably, or maybe.
I couldn't make the suggestion, I mean, fuck, you're, you're mending your schedule of fees.
So maybe.
You want to award it appropriately, if you could just hold it over to your next meeting, I don't think it's going to make any difference. We'll get your language on it, you can wordsmith it however you think's appropriate.
Okay.
But as opposed to doing it on the fly, I mean, you can do it if you want.
No, no, I'd rather wait, I, I don't want it.
What about the applications that we have before us tonight, like the Historical Society and Juneteenth, uh, both have.
I know, that's, that's sort of a, the pending thing is that we're getting every day, somebody's coming in saying.
We, we could make it retroactive.
You could, absolutely, effective.
And then giving back their money.
Right.
Aren't you glad you're here?
One thing that was brought up that earlier that we haven't, it hasn't come back to us yet, but that was certain events. Carly, you brought that up to, you know, like Memorial Day Parade and the.
Veterans Day Parade.
Veterans Day Parade, so there are two.
Nine eleven.
Events, um, nine eleven, so um, those, can those events be added as excluded?
Uh, sure, sure, absolutely, but you need a list of them. So put it in the paper and tell us what you want.
And maybe we figure out if that's really necessary, like, um, okay. All right.
Take a look at the draft we provide you with, and we can say if you want to wordsmith it, change things around, you know, if you can, if you can do it in the next meeting.
Okay, so, so Tom, I'll take that back, you don't have to do it on the fly. But if you want to wordsmith it after the meeting and then send it over to Steve, that would be, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Uh, privilege of the floor. Anybody want to speak to us after that? Okay, we'll move on to, we'll, we'll move on to motions. Government in action, I mean, you know, really.
Motion to approve payment number twelve in the amount of two thousand one hundred thirteen dollars seventy-five cents to Tam Enterprises Inc. for the vertical spiral screen at the Orchard Street Pump Station for work involved in the completion of final punch list items. Per the recommendation of village engineer David Getz, funds are appropriated in budget code G point eight one two zero point four nine five zero in the twenty twenty-one twenty-two budget.
Okay, have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve payment number thirteen in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars to Tam Enterprises Inc. for the final payment of the vertical spiral screen at the Orchard Street Pump Station per the recommendation of village engineer David Getz. Funds are appropriated in budget code G point eight one two zero point four nine five zero in the twenty twenty-one twenty-two budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Village of Warwick employee Dylan Gersten to carry over five vacation days.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to hire Winkley Banker to the position of Village of Warwick Engineering Intern at a pay rate of sixteen dollars per hour at thirty-two point five hours per week for twelve weeks with a start date to be determined by DPW Supervisor Mike Moser.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to advertise for two DPW seasonal laborers at a rate of sixteen dollars per hour at forty hours per week for a twelve-week period per the recommendation of DPW Supervisor Mike Moser.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Corey?
Make a motion to grant permission to the Historical Society of the Town of Warwick to use Memorial Park to hold a George Washington Day five K and fun run on Saturday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. With setup to begin at seven AM and breakdown to be completed by eleven AM. The event will begin at eight thirty AM, departing from Memorial Park to Forester Avenue, High Street, South Street, Park Lane, Park Place, Burt Street, Farland Drive, Hudson Street, Long House Road, Ast Street, Bridges Street to White Oak. An exit.
And exits through Memorial Park back to the finished starting line per their letter dated May fourth, twenty twenty-two. The event is in coordination with Warwick Little League, Warwick Wascals, and Warwick Football and Cheer. The Warwick Police Department have been notified and approved the route, completed park permit, proof of proper insurance, application fee and security deposit have been received.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, make a motion to grant permission to Village of Warwick clerk Rena Abramson to carry over three point seven nine vacation days.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Art League to use the Memorial Park Pavilion on Wednesdays from ten AM to one PM from May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two for their weekly painting and drawing sessions, including use of bathrooms and five picnic tables. Completed park permit, proof of proper insurance and security deposit have been received.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the proposal for landscape architectural services from Karen Arnt for the preparation of a landscape master plan for Veterans Memorial Park at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars and authorize the mayor to sign the same.
Discussion.
I have a question about this.
Well, let's put second at first.
Second.
Okay, discussion. So I just had a question. I saw Karen's letter. I just want to confirm that, um, the park committee will be established before she begins the work.
Oh, yeah.
And how long do you foresee that taking to form a committee?
Um, I, I think we're going to, well, we're, we're having the listening session, um, this coming Sunday and I think hopefully, um, in the two weeks following that we'll have figured out a committee of stakeholders and, uh, and we're hoping that the listening session will actually bring out people that might be interested, so, okay.
Do we, please, what was the original estimate? I don't know if we received an estimate, but I see a not to exceed ten thousand.
Um, well, she, she didn't really give us an original estimate. Uh, there was a budget number of half that, but, uh, it, it wasn't clear as it was forming, you know, the extent of work and the extent of outreach. And once that became much clearer, then the number kind of grew, uh, with the understanding that there was going to be a lot of outreach to the public and revisions of plans. So that was, uh, that's where that came from.
Well, now, that was our line item too, but that hadn't been developed in coordination with her based on the scope that we made.
Right.
Right, so I saw the original one, um, which it seemed like she was going to go by herself and make plans without the input and then this revised one, I guess capturing that input ballooned that cost a bit?
Well, the major change was that we wanted more iterations, like, and we wanted to be able to have a, like, public review of the draft.
Right.
You know, and so that, that in addition to integrating sort of, sort of input, both on the front end and in the, the draft, takes more time.
Got it. And will this act as the, as a parks plan for specifically Memorial Park?
Yes.
So this will be in lieu of a comprehensive parks plan?
When, uh, what, what do you mean? I'm sorry.
So we discussed, um, a while back about revisiting the, the parks plan in general, right? Obviously much broader, we consider all the different parks that we have.
Oh, all the parks, oh, yeah. No, this is.
This specific Memorial Park, but will this be considered the park plan, um, for Memorial Park? Because it has a, has an element of resident input, right? It has an element of a professional landscape architect. So I, I, I just want to make sure that, you know, any decisions we make after this, right, that we've done our due diligence, um, and that we can look at this as kind of a, a parks plan specific to Memorial Park.
I think that's the, that, that's the desire. Um, and what you talk about is, uh, the larger scope of a parks plan, I think came out of the, um, master plan, comprehensive master plan committee. And I agree with that, but I don't think that that's a much broader stroke, um, than what this is about. This is really looking at the uses and the needs in this, in this specific park and reaching out to the public and the stakeholders that, um, you know, that are part of that, uh, desire or, you know, have, want to have an input on this park, okay?
We do intend to have other listening sessions that will be relevant to, um, sort of parks more broadly, like, and also while people are providing feedback on the master plan, we expect there to be feedback like about parks and rec needs in general and that will go into, you know, we'll, we'll log that.
So Car- Carly and I are, have had a great discussion with Karen and the, you know, considering maybe the costs of the public outreach, um, for example, the listening session, Karen won't be there, but we will be performing that activity and bringing all that information to her. And we, we may do that again, you know, so she doesn't have to physically be there at every, at every session. There will be some key moments when it will be necessary for her to be there, but.
Right, so I think she mentioned she would be there for two.
Two, yeah.
On site.
Mm-hmm.
And is that, you know, pardon the ignorant question, is that, is that what's contributing to the additional cost?
It's the iterations, it's more, it's less the actual, like, meeting with people. It's more that when I was, when we were reviewing the scope before, there wasn't really multiple iterations of the, the plan. And when I say that, I mean, you get a, you know, preliminary that you get to look at and you provide comment on it before it becomes a full draft. And then the draft, you know, the public gets to see and see whether we got it right, whether we listened, and then she needs to make adjustments so that it can be finalized. And that takes, you know, that takes additional time that was not conceptualized initially. And, and also she wasn't part, we, we picked that number, that five thousand dollar number, she wasn't involved in that.
No, and, and that was based on, um, some other costs when we had hired her for, um, Stanley Demming Park Master Plan. And she charged us a hourly rate and it came to less than that. So, you know, just as a placeholder, that was where, where that number came from.
This is just a not to exceed.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, thank you.
Um, just a, a question relative to some of the terminology within her proposal, or, or I guess I'd ask her, are we going to go beyond that and have some sort of a, a contract agreement with her? Because the issues that I saw, one was the, uh, third, payment within thirty days, um, or a one point five percent fee. Um, certainly if we're not satisfied with the work or the representation of what was said to have been done as to what we felt actually was done, and there was any kind of dispute, I think that, you know, we, we need to pay maybe within thirty days of settling that dispute. I mean, that's, that's, that's a way to, uh, to, to cover that. I also, um, think that the ownership of the documents, it's pretty clear in that proposal that she owns the documents. Well, she doesn't own the documents. There's give and take for both, um, have ownership of, of the document, documents. Um, and if we use it after her engagement is over, then she bears no responsibility or a limited responsibility, uh, for that. And there was also no mention of the village's insurance requirements, so. She's going to be expected to, to do that as well. So those were three of the, I guess, the key things that I saw.
So on, on one thing there Barry, regarding the big, the, in the terms of agre- of agreement, um, the invoices will be prepared monthly. And I think it's thirty days when we receive the invoice, right? So this wouldn't all happen, I don't think, in one month. I think maybe what's in question is the last several hours and invoicing whatever month that's going to be.
If, if, if we got, you know, she finished her work on May thirty-first and she issued an invoice on June first for the month of May. Well, if we have some concern over the appropriateness of the costs included in that invoice relative to the services that were being provided or the products that we had received as a result of those services, then, um, we should have the ability to dispute that without having to pay it within thirty days.
Yeah, shouldn't it be, uh, like after acceptance of the invoice?
So under the terms of agreement, the invoices section, which is I think under basic services and additional services, what was your other concern, Barry? I'm sorry.
Um, no insurance requirements and then the doc, ownership of documents.
Yeah, we should own and have full right of use for all.
Well, you, you do. The, the thing with architects of any kind is they're afraid that their plans are going to be taken and copied and used again by somebody else to.
That's, that, that, we, we don't intend to do that.
We can write that out.
Write that out, that's fine, yeah.
What insurance is it you're looking for?
Uh, the, uh, perfect, well, the whole package of insurance, the comprehensive, you know, we need a certificate of insurance that meets the village's requirements. I mean, we, I think we've got agreements that exist now that you've seen and, and approved that should be easily, uh, transitioned to cover this.
All right, so if I'm, I don't mean to do that, okay. So you can wait and ask her for a revised letter and we'll communicate to her that these things need to be put into it and then you can approve the revised letter. Or you could apply, approve disagreement subject to submission in language that's acceptable to the village board, additional, uh, insurance provision, uh, provision, um, uh, change in the, uh, language regarding ownership documents reflect the village's ownership of all documents generated, um, and, uh, changes to the submission of, uh, voucher invoices to indicate that you have thirty days from the date of approval. So if you want to do the resolution that way, you can approve it tonight. If you want to wait till the next meeting, we can get a revised letter from her. Whatever the board wants.
I mean, I, I don't think we need to wait to get a revised letter from her, uh, from my, my viewpoint anyway. And, uh, that, you know, as long as, um, you know, we're, we're working with the document that we're providing as, as a contract.
Well, what she would do is she'll send a follow-up letter saying, I understand the board has approved retention of me, person with the terms of my May six twenty twenty-two letter, subject to, and she'll list the three things. Please be advised we modify it as follows, and then if you want to accept it that way, you can accept it that way. Other than that, you approve it subject to submitting a whole new revised letter.
My, my, my suggestion was we authorize the mayor to proceed, but use, uh, a standard professional services contract.
Okay.
I mean, that's a.
I don't think you're going to get much more than what you got in this letter, in your standard professional form contract, but if you're more comfortable with that, that's fine. I don't, I'm really sorry.
Why, why do you not, why do you feel that way? You get that from all our professionals?
You do, but it has pretty much what's in here. Plus, if you want to have these three items added, it's fine. But I mean, if you want to have, it's fine, really.
So nothing else is missing?
For our landscape architect, there's nothing significant that's missing. I mean, she's going to redesign your park. She's not building a sewage treatment plan or a pump station or something like that. It's, it's pretty straightforward. She's going to draw you up the plans and if you're confident that what's in here sets forth what you expect to get from her, that's what you're going to get from her. You got a ten thousand dollar cap, got an hourly rate set, it's just not going to be anything all that different.
I don't know, what do you think the easiest way to go is? Have you, you've been in negotiations?
Yeah, I think the easiest way to go would be to accept that with modifications that we talked about. I just feel like it's going back to square one to ask for a, an entire new contract. I mean, it's.
So the motion would be revised to accept the proposal subject to.
Submission of retention letter containing the additional terms that the village board is required.
Retention.
Then there's three of them that we.
With Peter Fairweather, did we, didn't he make his own contract similar to that?
It was Peter's contract. That's, that's Steve revised.
Yeah.
Insurance, ownership of the documents.
Submission of voucher invoices to be paid within thirty days after approval.
After approval.
Okay.
Can I reread the motion?
Sure.
Oh, should you do?
Well, no, no.
Are we done? Oh.
I, I think it's a, a motion to amend.
Motion's been made and seconded. If somebody wants to make a motion to amend the motion, or you could withdraw it, um, to, um, approve the contract subject to the submission of a revised contract containing, containing those changes, that's, that's what you would do. And then there'd be a vote on the amended motion, first motion.
Okay, so motion to amend the motion to, um, accept the proposal for landscape architectural services from Karen Arnt for the preparation of a landscape master plan for Veterans Memorial Park at a cost not to exceed ten thousand and authorize the mayor to sign the same with modifications, um, to, uh, require acceptance of invoice before the thirty days sets in, to require, um, insurance information and the document ownership lies with the village.
Okay, just so we're clear, it's not a motion to amend the motion, you're making an amended motion.
I'm making an amended motion, thank you.
Okay. Second.
Second. Can you repeat that, Barry?
Lessons in government. Uh, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the twenty twenty-two summer recreation staff and salaries as per the enclosed list per the recommendation of Village of Warwick Recreation Director Ron Entroine.
Okay. Do we have a second?
You go second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You know, I just want to say one thing, backing up to the motion on Karen Arnt. I really applaud you guys for really looking at this very carefully and, you know, I don't think you're micromanaging. I think you're really looking at it and, and looking after the village and the, and a product that we will get and be proud of and working with a professional. So I just want to say thank you.
And the professionals we deal with, I think in most cases we can trust impeccably, but you never know.
Well, we did have a, a very nice, uh, working relationship with her for Stanley Demming Park.
Right.
Hopefully it'll be the same. Okay, sorry.
Yeah. Motion to approve the budget modification request as per the village treasurer's memo dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Park Avenue Elementary School to hold a second grade picnic in Stanley Demming Park on June sixth, twenty twenty-two with a rain date of June seventh, twenty twenty-two from twelve PM to two thirty PM. Completed park permit and proof of proper insurance have been received.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to grant permission to Christ Church and Power, Power of Words Exposing Racism to use Railroad Green to host a Juneteenth celebration on Saturday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two from eight AM to six PM with the event beginning at eleven AM and ending at four PM, including use of fifteen vendor parking spaces in the Chase Bank Parking Lot. This event is in coordination with the Union AME Church Community Health Fair. In the event, oh, Union AME must use their rain date of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Completed park permit, proof of proper insurance and security deposit have been received.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second discussion, please.
Okay.
With the request for fifteen vendor parking spaces in the Chase Bank Parking Lot, do we, are, are we able to use that? I mean, I know it's a, it's a weekend, right? So I think we do have some kind of agreement with Chase to use the majority of those spaces, is that?
Many of them are permit, but we, we do, yeah.
So we have, um, right now, at the moment, we have twelve permit parking spaces that are open. Um, and Saturdays, it is a, the exterior of the lot is a permit holder only, so the public can't park in those spaces anyway. So the idea would be to give, uh, the Juneteenth coordinator specific permit spots that are empty. But the remaining spots, there's five right now, that's given out to, um, PEX for the Bank Street Bridge. We expect, I think, right, that might be, that would be done by them. So then we would have fifteen Chase permit spots to give them, which wouldn't take away from the public.
Okay, thank you.
And we did that for them last year?
We did. I believe last year that they did hold it on a Sunday, so that was a little different.
Mm-hmm, yeah, definitely. That would have been crazy with a farmer's market, though. Anybody else? Anyone? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to close Railroad Avenue on Saturday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two from six AM to six PM for the benefit of Christ Church and Power, Power of Words Exposing Racism, and to place sixteen no parking bags on the meters of Railroad Avenue beginning at six AM.
Second. Who's going to place the bags? We're going to give them to the, the organization and they will take care of that?
Yes, they'll sign them out with Kathy the day before.
Great. Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the proposal for engineering services from Barton and Le Judas dated May 12, 2022, for grant administration services for the village watershed land acquisition, water quality improvement program grant, and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the master services agreement with Barton and Le Judas for a not-to-exceed amount of $5,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And...
Do I have to fund?
Yeah, do you want to do that?
Oh, you want me to do it?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to accept funding in the amount of $4,000 from the New York State Office of Children and Family Services Youth Development Program through the Orange County Youth Bureau for the 2022 Village of Warwick Recreation Project for Youth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me ask, what, what, what is that? I was not, I saw this, um, this addendum to the agenda, but this, um, what is this funding and what is it for?
It's, uh, it's funding our park program.
Oh.
And the resolution is part of their grant process. It's required for payment.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so, reports.
Sorry, will me?
Yeah.
First item that I'll mention is the Bank Street Bridge. It's continuing to come along. The expectation is that, uh, it will be completed prior to Memorial Day, um, and, and assume open at the same time. Um, there, uh, one of the sidewalks has been in and, uh, the other one should be following shortly. Um, then they're going to have to mill and pave, um, from Main Street to the bridge and then from the bridge to the beginning, approximately the beginning of the, uh, PEX Liquor Store building. So, um, that's coming along, happy to say. Um, also, um, this, uh, Saturday is the Repair Cafe. Um, it's being held at the Senior Center at the Town Hall Complex, uh, 132 Kings Highway, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And it's an opportunity, if you don't already know about it, to bring any of your, uh, broken items that are in need of repair to the repair coaches and they will assist you, um, with, uh, those repairs. And they're covering mechanical and electrical, um, laptops, tablets, cell phones, bikes, jewelry, wooden things, clothing, home textiles, soft toys, uh, knife and tool sharpening. There's a limit of two items per person and, um, masks are going to be required unless circumstances change. And they're asking that you bring a non-perishable box or can as a donation to the food pantry.
Okay, thank you. Carly?
Oh, okay. Um, so I, I have a couple, uh, things to report. So last week I met with the office of, um, the Orange County Office of Tourism and Film. It was a really positive meeting. Uh, we talked about, um, economic development and tourism in the village as well as, uh, the film policy and permit process. The town of Montgomery is also looking to update their, um, process. And, um, I also had a conversation with the city of Newburgh about sort of, um, best practices and how, what their relationship with the film industry looks like and how their code works. And, um, it sounds like things are very positive for them. And, and so what we discussed is that it probably makes sense for us to update alongside the town of Montgomery. It's also beneficial because, um, the office of the, the Orange County Office of Tourism and Film and, well, the film office and specifically is looking to provide sort of concierge services and really kind of facilitate, uh, the relationships between the film industry and the local, uh, communities to kind of maximize the positive relationships while minimize disruptions. And so having some, um, some synchronicity between the way we do things can, you know, be helpful. Um, also, um, I heard that the bocce ball courts got started.
Yes.
Yes.
That's good to hear. Um, we have a virtual suggestion box and a real suggestion box now. And we got our first suggestion today, which was pretty cool. Um, and then, uh, finally, Hello Warwick Valley, we had a steering committee meeting on May 5th. That steering committee meets, um, quarterly. And in case folks don't know, it's, um, the steering committee consists of representatives from the four chambers, some nonprofits, as well as the three villages and the town elected officials. And, um, the steering committee meets quarterly on ways to kind of increase community connectivity to all of the things that, um, we have to do here in the Warwick Valley. Oh, and then one more thing, um, if, if community members would like their home or their property to be considered for filming, there's a database that, um, that they can access directly on, um, the Office of Tourism and Film website. They can submit their property and then be considered. Um, and then there's a small, I guess, fee that folks get for that. Barry made me aware of that.
That's cool. That's great. Corey, do you have any?
Uh, just an event happening this Wednesday for the Warwick Historical Society, um, in conjunction with the Florida Historical Society. Uh, they are holding a hands-on history walking tour of our friends at the Village of Florida. It's a meet at 7:00 PM behind the Florida Village Hall, 33 South Bain Street in Florida, and enjoy hearing some stories of the buildings, structures, industries and residents who have inhabited the main street of this charming village. The walkabout will last just over an hour and cover just over a mile of distance. It's not recommended for young children and those who cannot stand for an hour. The guided history tour is free, family-friendly, and reservations are recommended by calling 845-986-3236.
Great. That's good. Come?
Okay, um, we have a few openings on some of our boards. Um, we have put out, uh, an ad for some of these positions. Um, I believe in the advertiser. So we are seeking, um, multiple candidates to speak with, um, for one alternate position on the planning board. Um, this person would have, uh, voting power when, um, a full-time planning board member or a regular planning board member cannot make the meeting. Um, so the expectation is that the alternate planning board member would come to all the meetings and really be as engaged as every other planning board member. Um, so if you're interested, please, uh, reach out to Village Hall. Um, secondly, we are seeking for, a, a member for the zoning board. Um, we have one of our zoning board members, um, move over to the planning board recently. So we're trying to backfill that position as well. Um, so that's for planning and zoning. Um, as far as the, the technology report here in Village Hall, um, we are operating on, uh, really an antiquated phone system. So it was budgeted for, we do have phones arriving, um, shortly. I'm not exactly sure when this is going to happen. But what that'll do is fix some of the connectivity issues that we've experienced with the internet and phones that were...
Combined.
Combined, connected. Um, that'll, that should also lower the cost to support because it seemed to be one of the top, um, support calls we had made. Um, that'll also allow us to remove an outdated switch that's not even supported by the vendor anymore, right? So from a security perspective, it's good to, uh, remove that. Um, that's all, um, oh, one more, one more thing as, I guess, the alternate to the, uh, Public Works Ops, um, since Mike, that you are here, um, I just want to recognize that we had this old salt barn with this, um, leaky roof, right? And I know that, um, we put out and we're asking for bids for contractors to replace that so we can keep the equipment, right, from being weathered. Um, I just want to recognize that, that, that your crew went above and beyond and used their own, their own skills, right, to replace that roof, really with just the cost of material.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I spoke to some of them. They, you know, they couldn't even run a compressor so no pneumatic nail guns. They were up there with good old hammer and nails. So...
Absolutely.
I just want to say, great job.
Thank you.
And it really saved the village some money, so thank you.
Thanks.
And that's all for me.
Mike, could I, could I ask you just to give us an update on Orchard and Elm Street?
Uh, Orchard Elm Street will begin May 23rd, weather permitting, uh, milling. Uh, we're going to mill from, um, Orchard Street, from Oakland Avenue to the intersection area of Elm and Welling. And all of the entirety of Elm Street will be milled. Uh, then we're going to put down some material to try to repack those roads and get back a base because there is no base on either one of those roads, which is because of many of our problems. Uh, a glass line fiber will be installed on Orchard Street to try to take away all of the inflow of water.
Well, and differential settlement, yeah.
Okay, engineering terms. And then we will pave, uh, with a binder and a top course, bringing everything right back to non, non-third world country existence. You were waiting for it. Hopefully it'll be done in eight days.
But I, uh, also want to say thank you to the men. I mean, this time of year is, I mean, it's like running. It's, I mean, you, you guys are doing so many different things on so many levels, you know, getting ready for, um, the, uh, maker's market this past weekend or, you know, making sure the flower pots are ready to be planted. And, you know, people have no idea of all the details and, uh, you know, hard work and how few men are actually doing that work throughout this entire village. Um, going back to Elm Street, digging up ancient railroad tracks that were buried because they didn't remove things in those days, they just buried them.
You wanted to get rid of it.
Yeah, so, uh, so I just want to say thank you for your leadership and for the work that the men are doing.
You got it, sir. You got a good group of guys. They're doing well.
They are, yeah. Um, we have a work session, uh, hopefully on Friday. And I, is everybody in agreement with that or...
We have one on Wednesday, too, right?
No.
No.
Oh, I thought it was Wednesday.
No. Oh.
Only two of the members of the board are, no, no. So what happened is that, yes, the work session is scheduled for this Wednesday at 8:30, um, but there was a conflict, uh, scheduling conflict. And so it was suggested to reschedule, just, this happened just today, uh, to possibly Friday, if, if you could make it. I think that's what we have to try to, try to figure out.
What time?
Before noon on Friday, yeah, any time that works for you all. We were thinking Friday because it seemed to be the day that some of the other trustees tend to come in. The only thing is that Sadie won't, won't be available on, on Friday. Uh, or, uh, Carly, you had available Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, I'm also free Thursday afternoon.
So 10 on Friday would be ideal for me.
It's fine for me.
Thursday afternoon, I'd have to leave probably around 2:30, so I could do it ahead of that.
But what about Friday?
Friday morning?
Okay.
Friday, 10 AM?
Friday, 10. That's great. And, um, the other thing, and we'll post it, uh, the listening session, uh, will be also advertised as a work session in the event that multiple trustees arrive and, uh, want to participate. So, um, that's how we'll handle that.
Which we hope you will.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, so final comments from the floor?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. My name's Nora Gervich. For those of you that don't know me, and I'm the executive director of the Warwick Historical Society. Thank you for approving our event tonight, the GW Day 5K. We're really excited. With your permission, I'd like to pass out our annual reports from the Historical Society this year.
You're welcome.
We just celebrated our 116th anniversary.
Thank you, Nora.
You're welcome. And I'm very, very pleased and proud of our organization. We have a, um, strategic plan that we worked on.
Thank you.
Over the COVID-19 crisis, we took that opportunity to go inward and reorganize our organization and our nonprofit a little bit. We've emerged with what I think is an exciting mission statement. It's very action-oriented. Um, we are preserving, sharing and celebrating the history of the town of Warwick. And, uh, this is something our organization's been doing for over a century. And I just think that it's nice to introduce what we do to you in a new way because we kind of are a new and a bold organization. So everything all goes new again. Um, you may know that our executive offices are going to be going in across the street at the 18-Town House. So I'm really pleased about that. However, that does not change where our headquarters are. Headquarters will still be the A.W. Buckby Center because that is the hub of activity for the Historical Society. If you haven't been there, I'd love to invite you to come and see our exhibits, see our departments. We have an archive department upstairs with, um, excuse me, thousands of items, uh, dating back to 1699. It's the oldest deed that we have in the archive department. In our clothing and textile department, we have about 1,800 garments that go back to 1790. And, um, our volunteers spend an average of 4,500 hours a year working in our departments. I'm the only full-time employee. There's one part-time employee. So this is really a volunteer-led organization. And I'm so proud to say that we are two and a half years in the black without dipping into our investments or our reserves. And we have the goal to become self-sustainable by 2025. So, um, it's a pleasure to introduce the new Warwick Historical Society to all of you. Um, I'd love you to come see our buildings, our tours, our exhibits, in addition to the 5K that thank you again for, um, approving this evening. On that afternoon, July 23rd, we'll have, uh, free public open house tours from 12 to 3:00 at a select number of Warwick Historical Society properties, including, we hope, the new executive offices. So hopefully by then we'll be moved in across the street, we'll be neighbors. And, um, we also have a lot of more, a lot more events coming up. There is a Shakespeare Festival coming up on June 3rd, 4th and 5th. And that's where we're with the Greenwood Lake Theater Company. We're going to do a week of Bard at Barrett's, which I'm excited about, too. Um, instead of Broadway at Barrett's that week, I think they're going to do Bard at Barrett's that week. So we'll have little one or two-minute monologues over there. We're still working out the details for that. Uh, Wine, Cheese and Jazz is coming up across the street. That's one of our fundraisers. We're planning our biggest fundraiser, the Party in the Park. Um, as Corey mentioned, thank you, Corey, our Hands-on History program continues. This Wednesday, we're meeting at, uh, the Florida Village Hall and doing a tour of the beautiful, charming village of Florida. June 1st, we're meeting at the 18-Town House. And we're going down Main Street and down Railroad Avenue with the village historian, Village of Warwick historian, Ivy Tullin. And then on June 8th, we'll be walking down the Village of Greenwood Lake with the village historian down there. And that will conclude this year's Hands-on History program, but it was a huge success. And thank you so much for partnering with us because it, it's, their people are clamoring for it. We're getting great turnouts. We've had about 100 people that we've entertained so far and educated at just four programs. So it's really a fun adventure into a little bit of adult education. And, um, we're working in partnership with a lot of educators and people in the community that have a lot that they want to give back to the community as well. I wondered if you might have any questions for me, further questions about the GW Day 5K or anything that you may have heard. I'd be happy to tell you what our properties are. You may not know everyone that we own, but I can talk to talk about the Historical Society, so we don't want to necessarily do that to you. Um, but really, thank you for all that you are doing for, um, to help our organization. We really love working in partnership with the village. Thank you to the DPW for helping us with our fencing and our tree issues when we have those and when we had the park, the car in the park.
Oh, yeah, that was interesting, too, yeah.
Because we, I don't know if you all know that there was a, an accident in Lewis Park just a few weeks ago. And unfortunately, a woman had a medical condition and she ended up upside down and flipping her car in the park. And the DPW came out and helped us clear the, clear the tree and the work that fell. Um, any questions?
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
And I want to say that, that, um, Mary Ann, it did, was a great leader as president of, of the Historical Society. And now Jennifer, uh, is, is going to, I think, be excellent as well.
I think our, our board is strong. We, um, we don't have more, we have fewer members. Two members came off, Jeremy Havens and Mary Ann, uh, well, Mary Ann is, she's the immediate past president, but, um, Jeremy Havens and Greg Keyes came off of the board. But we still have 15 members of our board. They're just kind of shifting in their responsibilities and their roles. So it feels like we're setting Jennifer up for success. It's going to be a, a good, a good presidency. And she's got a lot of great ideas for increasing membership as well as working further into the community and developing and providing what we can do for services for you all.
That's great.
So if you have an idea, let me know. Because we are all ears and we'll try almost anything. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any more comments from the board? And we have no executive session, so could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not just the administrative manpower.
Right. Right. Okay, gang, it's your pleasure.
Certainly, on my end, accepting the applications, it would be very, if I had a clear list, that would be very helpful.
Right. So I think there's a number of ways we can go. We can go with the removal of all fees and security deposits, or we can retain the security deposit and eliminate all, all application fees, or we can do the same, but just remove the application fees for a select group of municipal entities. Or do nothing.
I'm in the second camp.
Go around the room.
Sorry, I'm in the second camp. I believe security deposits serve a purpose.
Yes.
The application fee, if one of them's exempt, all of them need to be exempt. If one of them's charged, all of them should be charged, so get rid of the application fee then.
Okay.
But the security deposit, I think, should stay in place.
But then, are you in favor of charging security deposits to the schools?
I am.
Should we go to each person?
Yeah, I don't know, but it's, so when the schools have been applying for these picnics and such, I mean, that has been an issue because they just can't get that check.
Right, so, so what's been happening is that one of the teachers from one of, you know, one teacher from the second grade, one teacher from the third grade will come forward and they'll request a picnic with the, with the reindeer. And they fill it out themselves, and historically, the security deposit has been waived, it's just with this new application that they're saying, wait a minute, you know, and they like waived as opposed to putting out a personal check because they would never get a security deposit from the district, at least it would take a lot of time. I think, I mean, I suppose we could ask the district to put these events together as one packet and provide one security deposit from the district, as opposed to having multiple motions or requests from every, every class?
That's the way the town handles it with Little League, and it rolls over year in and year out. So the deposit we made three or four years ago is just carried forward. They don't give us our check back or anything, it's been deposited somehow. I think we should look into that, and it would serve the purpose of the school, giving us one at the beginning of whatever year, and then it just stays there until they ask for it back.
I know the treasurer had some concerns over doing that. I don't, we'd have to ask her.
Yeah, I'm not sure she's talked to the town, the keeper of the town, but I think that would be the proper way to do it. Hopefully, I'm not opening a can of worms here.
Yeah, really. They're already gifting the Boy Scouts, so I don't know.
Also, with the school, some of their picnics, they don't even have greater than 200 people, and they're not really asking for exclusive use of the park, which in fact, then they wouldn't really need a permit to begin with. Just another twist on it. I don't want to make it too complicated for any organization and for my office, too.
Right.
Do we get a new certificate of insurance every time from the school district, or?
We keep one on file.
We've got one on file that covers, which, which is similar to what we might be able to do with the security deposit.
So I'm still in the same camp that I started in, where I think that we should exempt government entities because we're basically charging ourselves, I think, because they serve that, like, a municipal purpose. And then I think likewise, for events that the village would have to put on if these guys were not there to do that, then there should be an exemption.
Would the library, then, Carly, be part of the list, too? Is that considered?
Do you have a library district?
Yes.
Probably the library.
Library district.
Then, yeah, absolutely.
If it's, I mean, I don't know what the bound, you know, but that's what I would, I would draw that box around. And so then, you know, Memorial Day falls into that bucket, and maybe we would just need that list of, you know, what the municipal, the complete list of what the sort of municipal governmental service entities are and what the events are that we would be putting on if we didn't have them, you know?
Tom, what's your take?
Well, now I'm leaning towards not requiring application fees or security deposits, and potentially a section seven in the application where they agree to return the facility or the premise to the condition in which they found it. No real teeth or penalty there, except for the fact that we see the same organizations over and over again. So if one particular group just, you know, destroys the park, then...
We don't let them back.
We don't let them back. Let's consider it next time.
Yeah. That might be the, you know, the big family picnic of 300 people that just wreak havoc on Memorial Park, so.
There may not even need a section seven, but of course, we have to see, because you're only seeing a portion of the application because the rest of it is the actual code that was implemented, which is like pages and pages long, which says, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, you know, that sort of thing.
Is it, is it clear to the applicant, though?
Yes, they have to sign, that's what their, that one page is that they actually sign off on, too. It's like their rules and requirements, the park rules and requirements they sign off on.
If you're vandalizing public property, though, that sounds like we're getting into sort of criminal territory. So from that...
We've given them permission to be there.
Yeah.
But not to vandalize the property.
Well, it's not necessarily vandalism, it just could, they, they could just leave the garbage.
Oh, I know, but I'm saying if they vandal, if they, you know.
I think I'm of the school of waiving all fees but having security deposit. I think the security deposit has weight, does give us some leverage in the event that something happens, and, and it gets returned, so that's, and, and I think, again, it's very hard, I think also administratively, it's very hard to kind of say, okay, who are these people? Who are, you know, or, oh, the veterans are doing this event, and it's really, you know, a, a national municipal, you know, important event. But then, you know, that's a guess, you know, that's, you know, that's a judgment, you know? I mean, I guess we could try to figure that out, but I think it would be a lot cleaner by just, you know, we're not making a lot of money on it. And it would, a lot of these nonprofits don't have a great deal of money, and, you know, they're just trying to make a great event, and in some cases, many cases, raise funds for their, for their coffers, so that's where I stand.
So would that mean looking to do Barry's potential, you know, in order to avoid the hardship, so I'm assuming that we would have security deposits for everyone?
Right.
And that, you know, for the schools, for example, we would try to do something that...
We try to figure that out with them, yeah.
Even, yeah. So what if, what if, like, they submit a calendar at the beginning of the year for all of their events, but then, you know, a second grade teacher in the middle of the year wants to do, you know, a picnic? Like, could they just, like, add it in?
So we're, we're just talking about Park Avenue Elementary School.
Really?
That's all we're talking about.
Yeah.
And it's right, it's right there. I mean, I don't see why they even need a permit, they can just walk down with the kids.
They, I think they want the assurance to know that nothing else would be going on.
But, but nobody has exclusive use of the park, that's the trouble. You know, they would, if, but we are, we don't close the park or anything while their picnic is going on, and schools are still in, so I don't know how busy it is, I'm sure there's lots of kids there still. They use the picnic tables, but they're not blocked off or anything, right, Mike, for the picnics there?
What about, like, is there somewhere close to Memorial Park that, I mean, not Memorial Park, but this is actually maybe a digression, but the, if there was picnic tables in the, because there's that whole area that's immediately adjacent to the school, that big giant field and everything?
Yeah, and when they have, they have a big...
That's their playground.
Right.
So other classes use that, and so if you were gonna take a class and go out there and take over that field, then you're gonna interrupt phys ed and recesses.
Right.
But we don't receive any complaints about ever, like, the picnics, that, you know, there were other kids or they couldn't use the tables. They, they just go down and have a great time, and I think the kids sit anywhere.
Yeah.
Wherever they can. I guess that's another option, waive the facility use permit application for Park Avenue picnics? I don't know.
Yeah. Or, or talk to the... The security deposit is what we're talking about, and, and I think it's just a matter of maybe a discussion with the school district and say, you know, can, can we, can you offer us something that would cover these, you know, kind of string of events that, you know...
Just keep it on file year after year.
Yeah.
Have a standing, well, and then what's to stop us from having that relationship with other entities? Wait, if they, you know, they give us a security deposit, and then we just hang on to it for their events?
I can see Sadie's head spinning.
Spinning, yeah.
I know that she was not a fan of holding on to security deposits year after year.
Yeah.
And she is in touch quite often with the control in the town, and she may have already had that conversation, but I don't, but I don't recall, so.
But even if they gave back to school at the end of the fall, I mean, you know, or whatever the, the end of the period is, at the end of the semester, and they just gave another check for, for the security deposit, I, I, I don't see why that would be a problem.
Okay.
For each year?
Yeah. Instead of just holding on to it and rolling in?
We're happy, yeah.
So Barry, where, where do you stand?
A lot of moving parts.
That's true.
I, I think as far as the security deposit goes, I could see waiving it for the governmental entities. I think it's important, you know, we're, we're dealing with a, a known field of participants, applicant, applicants. And, and so what concerns me is what's out there that's unknown at, at this point in time. And so I, I, I think we need, we, we can't just waive the security deposit blanket for, for everybody, so I think it needs, it needs to, to be there. And, and as far as the fee goes, again, knowing the applicants that we have, I probably wouldn't have a problem doing that. You know, I, I, and again, no disrespect to the office because, you know, they work very hard at, at dealing with these applications, and, and it does take time. So, you know, if we were to waive the application fees, I, I, I think maybe that's taking it a bit too far, and that we should decide who should and should not be required to, to have an application fee, and I think...
Barry, you're the one that, Barry, you're the one that brought this up. I just want to remind you, Barry.
But just now, did you mean application fee at the end, or security deposit?
I was talking about application.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
So are you...
But what about the security deposit, then?
I think the security deposit should be there.
Forever.
Except for the governmental entities.
That would solve it for the schools, then, that would make it easy. It would, if you waived all the, if you waived the security deposit and the fees for the government agencies, including the schools, then that administratively would be less of a burden to, to my office. And then the security deposits, I'm sorry, I don't know where you stand with the fees altogether, but...
I could get on board with that, like, if we decide, either way, to me, is fine with the, if we choose not to do fees or stay with fees but waive the governmental entities, that would be, and then security deposit, keep that, but not for governmental entities.
Okay, so let me get this straight.
Yeah, say that first, I'm sorry, say that first part again about the application fees.
I don't feel strongly about keeping or jettisoning the application fees, but if we do keep them, I am in favor of not charging governmental entities for them. And I agree with maintaining security deposits except for, for governmental entities.
Okay, so I think, so I've been trying to capture this, so I think you and Barry are saying the same thing.
I think so.
Right.
Except I am also fine with keeping the fee, but you were in favor of waiving the fee altogether.
At one point, he was.
Oh, but you've changed your mind. We're on the same page.
You're on the same page.
I think that was posed as a question.
I was suggesting to waive everything, I think Corey's proposing to keep the plan as is, and Mayor...
No, Corey was actually, I don't want to...
No, I, I could say, so I am okay with, I'm confused. Okay, so security deposit should be in place, in my mind, and application fees, I, I think we would run into a problem by just saying, you know, this one gets exempt and this one. Yes, we know the field of entities, but events change, and the numbers change of attendees, so I don't, I'm not comfortable with that.
So you're in favor of keeping the policy as is?
Or application fees, done away with, right?
Okay, but security deposits maintained with no exceptions?
Of course, they get it back, and it's to protect us.
Which is great.
The village.
Okay, so...
It's like a horse race.
You should see his shirt.
I have a matrix.
Great.
So if you separate the two, application fees, I think two were, Mayor, I think you are okay with not having application fees?
Right.
That's what I propose.
And Corey is, too.
Corey is on the fence with that.
No, no, he's, he's...
You're with that, okay. And then Carly and Barry are favor with keeping the application fees with the exception for governmental services?
I, I, I'm ambivalent about the fee.
Okay.
With, but if we keep it, then we exempt governmental entities.
Understood.
Because we're charging ourselves, that's my perspective.
And then for the security deposit, I think Mayor, Trustee Chaney, Trustee Fosser are all in favor of keeping it with the exceptions of governmental services. Trustee Buckman, I think you're in favor of keeping the policy as written, and I was in favor of removing the, the security deposit. So I think I would be in the minority of that. So if you were to put this together, one possible route could be to waive the application fee, keep the security deposit with the exception of the governmental services. Did I capture that?
I would vote yea.
Yeah.
Or aye.
That sounds, I mean, I think that's where...
Right, to be specific, the...
Public schools, fire department, police department, ambulance corps, and then I guess we need to look at the library.
Okay, if you want to characterize it that way, a fire company is not municipal entity, a fire district is. An EMS corps is not a governmental entity unless it's sponsored by or doing work for a municipality.
It provides, it provides municipal services.
It's a town EMS. Their, their funds come from...
It's a district.
If that's the case, then you're just fine with them.
Yeah, and the same with the fire department.
They're part of a district?
It's, it is a district, but it's their own, their, it's not a municipal district, it's their own district.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
As long as it's a fire district, that's municipal entity.
How would you describe this? How would you describe the exceptions, public schools and emergency services?
Well, I think you can say municipal services, municipal entities, as long as you know what that means.
Okay.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like you have any municipal services around here that are private anyway, so not gonna be an issue, I don't think.
My definition of a municipal service is something that if that entity wasn't there, we would have to fill it. Like, so like, how would you, you know, we have to have fire service.
Yeah, but the municipal entity has a meaning, it's, it's got...
I know, I, yeah, I was just generalizing, that's fine.
Private entity does a municipal thing, that doesn't make it a municipal entity.
But if, for example, in some, if someone showed up in the future, I guess we would have to revisit it, then. But right now, it's not an issue because they're districts, okay.
So I think we've, we've commandeered through this. I think we have, you know, a basis of consensus, and so while we're starting our motions, Tom, you can work on the motion.
Would it be two motions? Is it, is it going to be...
It would be two motions, probably, or maybe...
Well, I could make the suggestion, I mean, you're, you're mending your schedule of fees.
So maybe we'll...
You want to award it appropriately, if you could just hold it over to your next meeting, I don't think it's gonna make any difference, we'll get your language on it, you can wordsmith it however you think's appropriate.
Okay.
But as opposed to doing it on the fly, I mean, you could do it if you want.
No, no, I'd rather wait, I, I don't want to.
What about the applications that we have before us tonight, like the Historical Society and Juneteenth, both have been...
I know, that's, that's sort of, the pending thing is that we're getting every day, somebody's coming in saying, I'm going to have a...
We could make it retroactive.
You could, absolutely, effective, whatever.
And then give them back their money, right?
Aren't you glad you're here?
One thing that was brought up that earlier that we haven't, it hasn't come back to One thing that was brought up that earlier that we haven't, it hasn't come back to us yet, but that was certain events, Carly, you brought that up to, you know, like Memorial Day Parade and the.
Veterans Day Parade.
Veterans Day Parade, so there are two.
Nine eleven.
Events, nine eleven, so those, can those events be added as excluded?
Uh, sure, sure, absolutely, but you need a list of them. So put them in the paper and tell us what you want.
And maybe we figure out if that's really necessary, like, okay. All right.
Okay.
Take a look at the draft, we provide you with, so if you want to wordsmith it, change things around, you know, you can, you can do it next meeting.
Okay, so, so Tom, I'll take that back, you don't have to do it on the fly. But if you want to wordsmith it after the meeting and then send it over to Steve, that would be, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Privilege of the floor, anybody want to speak to us after that? Okay, we'll move on, we'll, we'll move on to motions. Government in action, I mean, you know, really.
Motion to approve payment number 12 in the amount of $2,113.75 to Tam Enterprises, Inc. for the vertical spiral screen at the Orchard Street Pump Station for work involved in the completion of final punch list items per the recommendation of Village Engineer David Getz. Funds are appropriated in budget code G.8120.4950 in the 2021-22 budget.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve payment number 13 in the amount of $17,475 to Tam Enterprises, Inc. for the final payment of the vertical spiral screen at the Orchard Street Pump Station per the recommendation of Village Engineer David Getz. Funds are appropriated in budget code G.8120.4950 in the 2021-22 budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Village of Warwick employee Dylan Gerstner to carry over five vacation days.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to hire weekly banker to the position of Village of Warwick Engineering Intern at a pay rate of $16 per hour at 32.5 hours per week for 12 weeks with a start date to be determined by DPW Supervisor Mike Moser.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to advertise for two DPW seasonal laborers at a rate of $16 per hour at 40 hours per week for a 12-week period per the recommendation of DPW Supervisor Mike Moser.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Cory?
Make a motion to grant permission to the Historical Society of the Town of Warwick to use Memorial Park to hold a George Washington Day 5K and fun run on Saturday, July 23rd, 2022. With setup to begin at 7:00 AM and breakdown to be completed by 11:00 AM. Event will begin at 8:30 AM, departing from Memorial Park to Forester Avenue, High Street, South Street, Park Lane, Park Place, Burt Street, Farland Drive, Hudson Street, Long House Road, Ass Street, Bridges Street to White Oak, and exits through Memorial Park back to the finish starting line per their letter dated May 4, 2022. The event is in coordination with Warwick Little League, Warwick Wascals, and Warwick Football and Cheer. The Warwick Police Department have been notified and approved the route, completed park permit, proof of proper insurance, application fee, and security, security deposit have been received.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to grant permission to Village of Warwick Clerk Raina Abramson to carry over 3.79 vacation days.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Art League to use the Memorial Park Pavilion on Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM from May 18th, 2022, through October 31st, 2022, for their weekly painting and drawing sessions, including use of bathrooms and five picnic tables. Completed park permit, proof of proper insurance, and security deposit have been received.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the proposal for landscape architectural services from Karen Arnt for the preparation of a landscape master plan for Veterans Memorial Park at a cost not to exceed $10,000 and authorize the mayor to sign the same.
Discussion.
I have a question about this.
Well, let's put second at first.
Okay, discussion, so I just had a question, I saw Karen's letter, I just want to confirm that the park committee will be established before she begins the work.
Oh, yeah.
And how long do you foresee that taking to form a committee?
I, I think we're going to, well, we're, we're having the listening session this coming Sunday, and I think hopefully in the two weeks following that we'll have figured out a committee of stakeholders and, and we're hoping that the listening session will actually bring out people that might be interested, so, okay.
Do we, please, what was the original estimate? I don't know if we have received an estimate, but I see a not to exceed 10,000.
Well, she, she didn't really give us an original estimate. There was a budget number of half that, but it, it wasn't clear as it was forming, you know, the extent of work and the extent of outreach. And once that became much clearer, then the number kind of grew with the understanding that there was going to be a lot of outreach to the public and revisions of plans. So that was, that's where that came from.
Well, now, that was our line item too, but that hadn't been developed in coordination with her based on the scope that we made.
Right.
Right, so I saw the original one, which it seemed like she was going to go by herself and make plans without the input. And then this revised one, I guess capturing that input ballooned that cost a bit?
Well, the major change was that we wanted more iterations, like, and we wanted to be able to have a, like, public review of the draft.
Right.
You know, and so that, that, in addition to integrating sort of input, both on the front end and in the, the draft, takes more time.
Got it, and will this act as the, as a parks plan for specifically Memorial Park?
Yes.
So this will be in lieu of a comprehensive parks plan?
When, uh, what, what do you mean, I'm sorry?
So we discussed a while back about revisiting the, the parks plan in general, right? Obviously much broader, we consider all the different parks that we have.
Oh, all the parks, oh, yeah, no, this is.
This specific Memorial Park, but will this be considered the park plan for Memorial Park? Because it has a, has an element of resident input, right? It has an element of a professional landscape architect. So I, I, I just want to make sure that, you know, any decisions we make after this, right, that we've done our due diligence, and that we can look at this as kind of a, a parks plan specific to Memorial Park.
I think that's the, that, that's the desire. And what you talk about is the larger scope of a parks plan, I think came out of the master plan, comprehensive master plan committee. And I agree with that, but I don't think that, that's a much broader stroke than what this is about. This is really looking at the uses and the needs in this, in this specific park and reaching out to the public and the stakeholders that, you know, that are part of that desire or, or, you know, have, want to have an input on this park, okay?
We do intend to have other listening sessions that will be relevant to sort of parks more broadly, like, and also while people are providing feedback on the master plan, we expect there to be feedback like about parks and rec needs in general, and that will go into, you know, we'll, we'll log that.
So Carly and I are, have had a great discussion with Karen and the, you know, considering maybe the costs of the public outreach. For example, the listening session, Karen won't be there, but we will be performing that activity and bring all that information to her. And we, we may do that again, you know, so she doesn't have to physically be there at every, at every session. There will be some key moments when it will be necessary for her to be there, but.
Right, so I think she mentioned she would be there for two.
Two, yeah.
On site. And is that, you know, pardon the ignorant question, is that, is that what's contributing to the additional cost?
It's the iterations, it's more, it's less the actual, like, meeting with people. It's more that when I was, when we were reviewing the scope before, there wasn't really multiple iterations of the, the plan. And when I say that, I mean, you get a, you know, preliminary that you get to look at and you provide comment on it before it becomes a full draft. And then the draft, you know, the public gets to see and see whether we got it right, whether we listened, and then she needs to make adjustments so that it can be finalized. And that takes, you know, that takes additional time that was not conceptualized initially. And, and also she wasn't part, we, we picked that number, that $5,000 number, she wasn't involved in that, so.
No, and, and that was based on some other costs when we had hired her for the Stanley Deming Park Master Plan. And she charged us a hourly rate and it came to less than that. So, you know, just as a placeholder, that was where, where that number came from.
This is just a not to exceed.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, thank you.
Just a, a question relative to some of the terminology within her proposal. Or I, I guess I'd ask, are we going to go beyond that and have some sort of a, a contract agreement with her? Because the issues that I saw, one was the third, payment within 30 days or a 1.5% fee. Certainly if we're not satisfied with the work or the representation of what was said to have been done as to what we felt actually was done, and there was any kind of dispute, I think that, you know, we, we need to pay maybe within 30 days of settling that dispute. I mean, that's, that's, that's a way to, to, to cover that. I also think that the ownership of the documents, it's pretty clear in that proposal that she owns the documents. Well, she doesn't own the documents, there's give and take for both. Have ownership of, of the document, documents. And if we use it after her engagement is over, then she bears no responsibility or a limited responsibility for that. And there was also no mention of the village's insurance requirements, so she's going to be expected to, to do that as well. So those were three of the, I guess, the key things that I saw.
So on one thing there Barry, regarding the big, the, in the terms of agree, of agreement, the invoices will be prepared monthly, and I think it's 30 days when we receive the invoice, right? So this wouldn't all happen, I don't think, in one month. I think maybe what's in question is the last several hours in invoicing, whatever month that's going to be.
If, if, if we got, you know, she finished her work on May 31st and she issued an invoice on June 1st for the month of May, well, if we have some concern over the appropriateness of the costs included in that invoice relative to the services that were being provided or the products that we had received as a result of those services, then we should have the ability to dispute that without having to pay it within 30 days.
Yeah, shouldn't it be like after acceptance of the invoice?
Right.
So under the terms of agreement, the invoices section, which is, I think, under basic services and additional services, what was your other concern, Barry, I'm sorry?
No insurance requirements and then the do, ownership of documents.
Yeah, we should own and have full right of use for all.
Well, you, you do, the, the thing with architects of any kind is they're afraid that their plans are going to be taken and copied and used again by somebody else to.
That, 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 we, we don't intend to do that.
We can write that out.
Write that out, that's fine, yeah.
What insurance is it you're looking for?
The, well, the whole package of insurance, the comprehensive, you know, we need a certificate of insurance that meets the village's requirements. I mean, we, I think we've got agreements that exist now that you've seen and approved that could be easily transitioned to cover this.
All right, so if I'm, I don't mean to do my. So you can wait and ask her for a revised letter and we'll communicate to her that these things need to be put into it, and then you can approve the revised letter. Or you could apply, approve disagreement subject to submission in language that's acceptable to the village board, additional insurance provision, provision, change in the language regarding ownership of documents reflective of village's ownership of all documents generated, and changes to the submission of voucher invoices to indicate that you have 30 days from the date of approval. So if you want to do the resolution that way, you can approve it tonight. If you want to wait till the next meeting, we can get a revised letter from her, whatever the board wants.
I mean, I, I don't think we need to wait to get a revised letter from her, from my, my viewpoint anyway. And that, you know, as long as, you know, we're, we're working with a document that we're providing as, as a contract.
Well, what she would do is she'll send a follow-up letter saying, I understand the board has approved retention of me, per some of the terms of my basics 2022 letter, subject to, and she'll list the three things. Please be advised we modify it as follows, and then if you want to accept it that way, you can accept it that way. Other than that, you approve it subject to submitting a whole new revised letter.
My, my, my suggestion was we authorize the mayor to proceed, but use a standard professional services contract.
Okay.
I mean, that's a.
I don't think you're going to get much more than what you got in this letter, in your standard professional form contract, but if you're more comfortable with that, it's fine.
Why, why do you not, why do you feel that, why do you get that from all our professionals?
You do, but it has pretty much what's in here, plus if you want to add these three items added, it's fine. But I mean, if you want to have, it's fine, really.
So nothing else is missing?
For our landscape architect, there's nothing significant that's missing. I mean, she's going to redesign your park, she's not building a sewage treatment plan or a pump station or something like that. It's, it's pretty straightforward, she's going to draw you up plans, and if you're confident that what's in here sets forth what you expect to get from her, that's what you're going to get from her. You got a $10,000 cap, got an hourly rate set, it's just not going to be anything all that different.
I don't know, what do you think the easiest way to go is? I mean, you, you've been in negotiations.
Yeah, I think the easiest way to go would be to accept that with modifications that we talked about. I just feel like it's going back to square one to ask for an entire new contract, I mean, it's.
So the motion would be revised to accept the proposal subject to.
Submission of retention letter containing the additional terms that the village board is requiring.
Retention.
Then there's three of them this week.
With Peter Fairweather, did we, didn't he make his own contract similar to that?
It was Peter's contract. That's Steve revised.
Yeah.
Insurance, ownership of the documents.
Submission of voucher invoices to be paid within 30 days after approval.
After approval.
Okay.
Can I reread the motion?
Sure.
Oh, should you do?
Well, no, no.
Are we done? Oh.
I, I think it's a, a motion to amend.
Motion's been made and seconded, if somebody wants to make a motion to amend the motion, or you could withdraw it, to approve the contract subject to those submission of a revised contract containing those changes, that's, that's what you would do, and then there'd be a vote on the amended motion, first motion to vote on it.
Okay, so motion to amend the motion to accept the proposal for landscape architectural services from Karen Arnt for the preparation of a landscape master plan for Veterans Memorial Park at a cost not to exceed 10,000 and authorize the mayor to sign the same with modifications to require acceptance of invoice before the 30 days sets in, to require insurance information and the document ownership lies with the village.
Okay, just so we're clear, it's not a motion to amend the motion, you're making an amended motion.
I'm making an amended motion, thank you.
Okay. Second.
Second. Can you repeat that, Barry?
Lessons in government, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the 2022 summer recreation staff and salaries as per the enclosed list per the recommendation of Village of Warwick Recreation Director Ron Entroine.
Okay, do we have a second?
You go, second.
Okay, all in favor? You know, I just want to say one thing, backing up to the motion on Karen Arnt. I really applaud you guys for really looking at this very carefully and, you know, I don't. And, you know, I don't think you're micromanaging. I think you're really looking at it and, and looking after the village and the, and a product that we will get and be proud of in working with a professional. So I just want to say thank you.
And the professionals we deal with, I think in most cases we can trust impeccably, but you never know.
Well, we did have a, a very nice, uh, working relationship with her for Stanley Demming Park.
Right.
Hopefully it'll be the same. Okay, sorry.
Yeah. Motion to approve the budget modification request as per the village treasurer's memo dated May 12th, 2022.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Park Avenue Elementary School to hold a second grade picnic in Stanley Demming Park on June 6th, 2022 with a rain date of June 7th, 2022 from 12:00 PM to 2:30 PM. Completed park permit and proof of proper insurance have been received.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Christ Church and Power, Power of Words Exposing Racism to use Railroad Green to host a Juneteenth celebration on Saturday, June 18th, 2022 from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM with the event beginning at 11:00 AM and ending at 4:00 PM, including use of 15 vendor parking spaces in the Chase Bank parking lot. This event is in coordination with the Union AME Church Community Health Fair. In the event, oh, Union AME must use their rain date of June 18th, 2022. Completed park permit, proof of proper insurance and security deposit have been received.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second discussion, please.
Okay.
With the request for 15 vendor parking spaces in the Chase Bank parking lot, do we, are, are we able to use that? I mean, I know it's a, it's a weekend, right? So I think we do have some kind of agreement with Chase to use the majority of those spaces. Is that?
Many of them are permit, but we, we do, yeah.
So we have, um, right now, at the moment, we have 12 permit parking spaces that are open. Um, and Saturdays it is that the exterior of the lot is a permit holder only, so the public can't park in those spaces anyway. So the idea would be to give, uh, the Juneteenth coordinator specific permit spots that are empty. But the remaining spots, there's five right now that's given out to, um, PEX for the Bank Street Bridge. We expect, I think, right, that might be, that would be done by them. So then we would have 15 Chase permit spots to give them, which wouldn't take away from the public.
Okay. Thank you.
And we did that for them last year?
We did. I believe last year though, they did hold it on a Sunday, so that was a little different.
Mm-hmm, yeah, definitely. That would have been crazy with a farmer's market, though. Anybody else, anyone? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to close Railroad Avenue on Saturday, June 18th, 2022 from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the benefit of Christ Church and Power, Power of Words Exposing Racism, and to place 16 no parking bags on the meters of Railroad Avenue beginning at 6:00 AM.
Second. Who's going to place the bags? We're going to give them to the, the organization and they will take care of that?
Yes, they'll sign them out with Kathy the day before.
Great. Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the proposal for engineering services from Barton and La Judas dated May 12th, 2022 for grant administration services for the village watershed land acquisition, water quality improvement program grant, and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the master services agreement with Barton and La Judas for a not to exceed amount of $5,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And? Yeah, do you want to do that?
Oh, you want me to do it?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to accept funding in the amount of $4,000 from the New York State Office of Children and Family Services Youth Development Program through the Orange County Youth Bureau for the 2022 Village of Warwick Recreation Project for Youth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask, what, what, what is that? I was not, I saw this, um, this addendum to the agenda, but this, um, what is this funding and what is it for?
It's, uh, it's funding our park program.
Oh.
Yeah.
And the resolution is part of their grant process. It's required for payment.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so reports.
Sarah LeMee?
Yeah, Sarah would be there.
First item that I'll mention is the Bank Street Bridge. It's continuing to come along. The expectation is that, uh, it will be completed prior to Memorial Day. Um, and, and assume open at the same time. They're, uh, one of the sidewalks has been in and, uh, the other one should be following shortly. Then they're going to have to mill and pave, um, from Main Street to the bridge and then from the bridge to the beginning, approximately the beginning of the PEX Liquor Store building. So, um, that's coming along, happy to say. Um, also, um, this, uh, Saturday is the Repair Cafe. Um, it's being held at the senior center at the Town Hall Complex, uh, 132 Kings Highway from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And it's an opportunity, if you don't already know about it, to bring any of your, uh, broken items that are in need of repair to the repair coaches and they will assist you, um, with, uh, those repairs. And they're covering mechanical, electrical, um, laptops, tablets, cell phones, bikes, jewelry, wooden things, clothing, home textiles, soft toys, uh, knife and tool sharpening. There's a limit of two items per person. And, um, masks are going to be required unless circumstances change. And they're asking that you bring a non-perishable box or can as a donation to the food pantry.
Okay, thank you. Carly?
Oh, okay. Um, so I, I have a couple, uh, things to report. So last week I met with the Office of, um, the Orange County Office of Tourism and Film. It was a really positive meeting. Uh, we talked about, um, economic development and tourism in the village as well as, uh, the film policy and permit process. The town of Montgomery is also looking to update their, um, process. And, um, I also had a conversation with the City of Newburgh about sort of, um, best practices and how, what their relationship with the film industry looks like and how their code works. And, um, it sounds like things are very positive for them. And, and so what we discussed is that it probably makes sense for us to update alongside the town of Montgomery. It's also beneficial because, um, the Office of the, the Orange County Office of Tourism and Film and, well, the Film Office and specifically is looking to provide sort of concierge services and really kind of facilitate, uh, the relationships between the film industry and the local, uh, communities to kind of maximize the positive relationships while minimize disruptions. And so having some, um, some synchronicity between the way we do things can, you know, be helpful. Um, also, um, I heard that the bocce ball courts got started.
Yes. Yes.
That's good to hear. Um, we have a virtual suggestion box and a real suggestion box now. And we got our first suggestion today, which was pretty cool. And then, uh, finally, uh, Hello Warwick Valley, we had a steering committee meeting on May 5th. That steering committee meets, um, quarterly. And, and in case folks don't know, it's, um, the steering committee consists of representatives from the four chambers, some nonprofits, as well as the three villages and the town elected officials. And, um, the steering committee meets quarterly on ways to kind of increase community connectivity to all of the things that, um, we have to do here in the Warwick Valley. Oh, and then one more thing, um, um, if, if community members would like their home or their property to be considered for filming, there's a database that, um, that they can access directly on, um, the Office of Tourism and Film website. They can submit their property and then be considered. Um, and then there's a small, I guess, fee that folks get for that. Barry made me aware of that.
That's cool. That's great. Corey, do you have any?
Uh, just an event happening this Wednesday for the Warwick Historical Society. Um, in conjunction with the Florida Historical Society, uh, they are holding a hands-on history walking tour of our friends at the Village of Florida. It's a meet at 7:00 PM behind the Florida Village Hall, 33 South Bain Street in Florida. And enjoy hearing some stories of the buildings, structures, industries, and residents who have inhabited the main street of this charming village. The walkabout will last just over an hour and cover just over a mile of distance. It's not recommended for young children and those who cannot stand for an hour. The guided history tour is free, family-friendly, and reservations are recommended by calling 845-986-3236.
Great. That's good. Tom?
Okay, um, we have a few openings on some of our boards. Um, we have put out, uh, um, an ad for some of these positions, um, I believe in the advertiser. So we are seeking, um, multiple candidates to speak with, um, for one alternate position on the planning board. This person would have, uh, voting power when, um, a full-time planning board member or a regular planning board member cannot make the meeting. Um, so the expectation is that the alternate planning board member would come to all the meetings and really be as engaged as every other planning board member. So if you're interested, please, uh, reach out to Village Hall. Secondly, we are seeking for, uh, a member for the zoning board. Um, we have one of our zoning board members, um, move over to the planning board recently. So we're trying to backfill that position as well. Um, so that's for planning and zoning. Um, as far as the, the technology report here in Village Hall, um, we are operating on, uh, really an antiquated phone system. So it was budgeted for, we do have phones arriving, um, shortly. I'm not exactly sure when it's going to happen. But what that'll do is fix some of the connectivity issues that we've experienced with the internet and phones that were.
Combined.
Combined, connected. Um, that'll, that should also lower the cost to support, because it seemed to be one of the top, um, support calls we had made. That'll also allow us to remove an outdated switch that's not even supported by the vendor anymore, right? So from a security perspective, it's good to, uh, remove that. That's all, um, oh, one more, one more thing, as I guess the alternate to the, uh, Public Works Ops. Um, since Mike, that you are here, um, I just want to recognize that we had this old salt barn with this, um, leaky roof, right? And I know that, um, we put out and we're asking for bids for contractors to replace that so we can keep the equipment, right, from being weathered. Um, I just want to recognize that, that, that your crew went above and beyond and used their own, their own skills, right, to replace that roof, really with just the cost of material.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I spoke to some of them. They, you know, they couldn't even run a compressor, so no pneumatic nail guns. They were up there with good old hammer and nails, so.
Absolutely.
I just want to say, great job.
Thank you.
And it really saved the village some money, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And that's all for me.
Mike, could I, could I ask you just to give us an update on Orchard and Elm Street?
Uh, Orchard and Elm Street will begin May 23rd, weather permitting, uh, milling. Uh, we're going to mill from, on Orchard Street from Oakland Avenue to the intersection area of Elm and Welling. And all of the entirety of Elm Street will be milled. Uh, then we're gonna put down some material to try to repack those roads and get back a base, because there is no base on either one of those roads, which is the cause of many of our problems. Uh, a glass line fiber will be installed on Orchard Street to try to take away all of the inflow of water.
Well, and differential settlement, yeah.
Okay, engineer in terms. And then we will pave, uh, with a binder and a top course, bringing everything right back to non-third world country existence. You were waiting for it, so. Hopefully it'll be done in eight days.
But, but I, uh, also want to say thank you to the men. I mean, this time of year is, I mean, it's like running. It's, I mean, you, you guys are doing so many different things on so many levels, you know, getting ready for, um, the, uh, makers market this past weekend or, you know, making sure the flower pots are ready to be planted. And, you know, people have no idea of all the details and, uh, you know, hard work and how few men are actually doing that work throughout this entire village. Going back to Elm Street, digging up ancient railroad tracks that were buried because they didn't remove things in those days, they just buried them.
You want to get rid of it.
Yeah, so, uh, so I just want to say thank you for your leadership and for the work that the men are doing.
You got it, sir. You got a good group of guys. They're doing well.
They are, yeah. We have a work session, uh, hopefully on Friday. And I, is everybody in agreement with that, or?
We have one on Wednesday too, right?
No.
No.
It wasn't.
Oh, I thought it was Wednesday.
No. Oh.
Only two of the members of the board are, no. So what happened is that, yes, the work session is scheduled for this Wednesday at 8:30, um, but there was a conflict, uh, scheduling conflict. And so that was suggested to reschedule, just, this happened just today, uh, to possibly Friday, if, if you could make it. I think that's what we have to try to, try to figure out.
What time?
Before noon on Friday?
Yeah, anytime that works for you all. We were thinking Friday because it seemed to be the day that some of the other trustees tend to come in.
The only thing is that Sadie won't be available on, on Friday. Uh, or, uh, Carly, you had available Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, I'm also free Thursday afternoon.
So 10 on Friday would be ideal for me.
It's fine for me.
Thursday afternoon, I'd have to leave probably around 2:30, so I can do it ahead of that.
But what about Friday?
Friday morning?
Okay.
Friday 10 AM?
Friday 10.
Okay.
That's great. And, um, the other thing, and we'll post it, uh, the listening session, uh, will be also advertised as a work session in the event that multiple trustees arrive and, uh, want to participate. So, um, that's how we'll handle that.
Which we hope you will.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, so final comments from the floor?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. My name's Nora Gervich. For those of you that don't know me, and I'm the executive director of the Warwick Historical Society. Thank you for approving our event tonight, the GW Day 5K. We're really excited. With your permission, I'd like to pass out our annual reports from the Historical Society this year. You're welcome. We just celebrated our 116th anniversary.
Thank you, Nora.
You're welcome. And I'm very, very pleased and proud of our organization. We have a, um, strategic plan that we worked on. Thank you. Over the COVID-19 crisis, we took that opportunity to go inward and reorganize our organization and our nonprofit a little bit. We've emerged with what I think is an exciting mission statement. It's very action-oriented. Um, we are preserving, sharing, and celebrating the history of the town of Warwick. And, uh, this is something our organization's been doing for over a century. And I just think that it's nice to introduce what we do to you in a new way because we kind of are a new and a bold organization, so everything all goes new again. You may know that our executive offices are going to be going in across the street at the 18-Town House. So I'm really pleased about that. However, that does not change where our headquarters are. Headquarters will still be the A.W. Buckby Center, because that is the hub of activity for the Historical Society. If you haven't been there, I'd love to invite you to come and see our exhibits, see our departments. We have an archive department upstairs with, um, excuse me, thousands of items, uh, dating back to 1699. It's the oldest deed that we have in the archive department. In our clothing and textile department, we have about 1,800 garments that go back to 1790. And, um, our volunteers spend an average of 4,500 hours a year working in our departments. I'm the only full-time employee. There's one part-time employee. So this is really a volunteer-led organization. And I'm so proud to say that we are two and a half years in the black without dipping into in our investments or our reserves. And we have the goal to become self-sustainable by 2025. So, um, it's a pleasure to introduce the new Warwick Historical Society to all of you. Um, I'd love you to come see our buildings, our tours, our exhibits. In addition to the 5K that thank you again for, um, approving this evening. On that afternoon, July 23rd, we'll have, uh, free public open house tours from 12 to 3 at a select number of Warwick Historical Society properties, including, we hope, the new executive offices. So hopefully by then we'll be moved in across the street, we'll be neighbors. And, um, we also have a lot of more, a lot more events coming up. There is a Shakespeare Festival coming up on June 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And that's where with the Greenwood Lake Theater Company, we're going to do a week of Bard at Barrett's, which I'm excited about too. Um, instead of Broadway at Barrett's that week, I think they're going to do Bard at Barrett's that week. So we'll have little one or two-minute monologues over there. We're still working out the details for that. Uh, Wine, Cheese, and Jazz is coming up across the street. That's one of our fundraisers. We're planning our biggest. We're planning our biggest fundraiser, the Party in the Park. As Cory mentioned, thank you Cory, our Hands-on History program continues. This Wednesday, we're meeting at the Florida Village Hall and doing a tour of the beautiful charming village of Florida. June 1st, we're meeting at the Eighteen Town House, and we're going down Main Street and down Railroad Avenue with the Village Historian, Village of Warwick Historian, Abby Tullin. And then on June 8th, we'll be walking down the Village of Greenwood Lake with the Village Historian down there. And that will conclude this year's Hands-on History program, but it was a huge success, and thank you so much for partnering with us, because it, it's, their people are clamoring for it, we're getting great turnouts, we've had about 100 people that we've entertained so far and educated at just four programs. So, it's really a fun adventure into a little bit of adult education, and we're working in partnership with a lot of educators and people in the community that have a lot that they want to give back to the community as well. I wondered if you might have any questions for me, further questions about the GW Day 5K, or anything that you may have heard. I'd be happy to tell you what our properties are, you may not know everyone that we own, but I can talk to talk about the Historical Society, so we don't want to necessarily do that to you. But really, thank you for all that you are doing for, to help our organization. We really love working in partnership with the village. Thank you to the DPW for helping us with our fencing and our tree issues when we had those, and when we had the park, the car in the park.
Oh, yeah, that's interesting, too, yeah.
Because we, I don't know if you all know that there was an accident in Lewis Park just a few weeks ago, and unfortunately, a woman had a medical condition and she ended up upside down and flipping her car in the park, and the DPW came out and helped us clear the, clear the tree and the work that fell. Any questions?
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you for everything you do.
Excellent job, yeah.
Thank you.
And I want to say that Mary Ann did, was a great leader as President of the Historical Society, and now Jennifer is, is going to, I think, be excellent as well.
I think our, our board is strong, we, we don't have more, we have fewer members. Two members came off, Jeremy Havens and Mary Ann, well, Mary Ann is, she's the immediate past president, but Jeremy Havens and Greg Keyes came off of the board, but we still have 15 members of our board. They're just kind of shifting in their responsibilities and their roles, so it feels like we're setting Jennifer up for success. It's going to be a good, a good presidency, and she's got a lot of great ideas for increasing membership, as well as working further into the community and developing and providing what we can do for services for you all.
That's great.
So, if you have an idea, let me know, because we are all ears and we'll try almost anything, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any more comments from the board? And we have no executive session, so could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With the understanding that there was going to be a lot of outreach to the public and revisions of plans, so that was, that's where that came from.
Well, that, that was our line item, too, but that hadn't been developed in coordination with her based on the scope that we
Right.
did, right.
Right, so I saw the original one, which it seemed like she was going to go by herself and make plans without the input. And then this revised one, I guess capturing that input ballooned that cost a bit?
Well, the major change was that we wanted more iterations, like, and we wanted to be able to have, like, public review of the draft.
Right.
You know, and so that, that, in addition to integrating sort of input, both on the front end and in the draft, takes more time.
Got it. And will this act as the, as a Parks Plan for specifically Memorial Park?
Yes.
So, this will be in lieu of a comprehensive Parks Plan?
When, uh, because, what, what do you mean, I'm sorry?
So, we discussed a while back about revisiting the Parks Plan in general, right? Obviously, much broader, we consider all the different parks that we have.
Oh, all the parks, oh, yeah, no, this is
This specific Memorial Park, but will this be considered the park plan for Memorial Park? Because it has a, has an element of resident input, right? It has an element of a professional landscape architect. So, I, I just want to make sure that, you know, any decisions we make after this, right, that we've done our due diligence, and that we can look at this as kind of a Parks Plan specific to Memorial Park.
I think that's the, that, that's the desire. And what you talk about is the larger scope of a Parks Plan, I think came out of the Master Plan Comprehensive, Master Plan Committee. And I agree with that, but I don't think that that's a much broader stroke than what this is about. This is really looking at the uses and the needs in this, in this specific park, and reaching out to the public and the stakeholders that, you know, that are part of that desire, or, you know, have, want to have an input on this part.
We do intend to have other listening sessions that will be relevant to sort of parks more broadly, like, and also, while people are providing feedback on the master plan, we expect there to be feedback, like about parks and rec needs in general, and that will go into, you know, we'll, we'll log that.
So, Carly and I are, have had a great discussion with Karen, and the, you know, considering maybe the costs of the public outreach, for example, the listening session, Karen won't be there, but we will be performing that activity and bringing all that information to her. And we may do that again, you know, so she doesn't have to physically be there at every, at every session. There will be some key moments when it will be necessary for her to be there, but
Right, so I think she mentioned she would be there for two
Two, yeah.
onsite. And is that, you know, pardon the ignorant question, is that, is that what's contributing to the additional cost?
It's the iterations, it's more, it's less the actual, like, meeting with people. It's more that when I was, when we were reviewing the scope before, there wasn't really multiple iterations of the, the plan. And when I say that, I mean, you get a, you know, preliminary that you get to look at, and you provide comment on it before it becomes a full draft. And then the draft, you know, the public gets to see and see whether we got it right, whether we listened, and then she needs to make adjustments so that it can be finalized. And that takes, you know, that takes additional time that was not conceptualized initially. And, and also, she wasn't part, we, we picked that number, that $5,000 number, she wasn't involved in that, so
No, and, and that was based on some other costs when we had hired her for Stanley Demming Park Master Plan, and she charged us a hourly rate, and it came to less than that. So, you know, just as a placeholder, that was where, where that number came from.
This is just a not-to-exceed.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, thank you.
Just a, a question relative to some of the terminology within her proposal, or I guess I'd ask, are we going to go beyond that and have some sort of a contract agreement with her? Because the issues that I saw, one was the third, payment within 30 days, or a 1.5% fee. Certainly, if we're not satisfied with the work or the representation of what was said to have been done as to what we felt actually was done, and there was any kind of dispute, I think that, you know, we, we need to pay maybe within 30 days of settling that dispute. I mean, that's, that's, that's a way to, to, to cover that. I also think that the ownership of the documents, it's pretty clear in that proposal that she owns the documents. Well, she doesn't own the documents, there's give and take for both, have ownership of, of the document, documents. And if we use it after her engagement is over, then she bears no responsibility or a limited responsibility for that. And there was also no mention of the village's insurance requirements, so she's going to be expected to, to do that as well. So, those were three of the, I guess, the key things that I saw.
So, on one thing, there Barry, regarding the, the, in the terms of agree, of agreement, the invoices will be prepared monthly, and I think it's 30 days when we receive the invoice, right? So, this wouldn't all happen, I don't think, in one month. I think maybe what's in question is the last several hours in invoicing whatever month that's going to be.
If, if, if we got, you know, she finished her work on May 31st, and she issued an invoice on June 1st for the month of May, well, if we have some concern over the appropriateness of the costs included in that invoice relative to the services that were being provided, or the products that we had received as a result of those services, then we should have the ability to dispute that without having to pay it within 30 days.
Yeah, shouldn't it be, like, after acceptance of the invoice?
So, under the terms of agreement, the invoices section, which is, I think, under basic services and additional services, what was your other concern, Barry, I'm sorry?
No insurance requirements, and then the do, ownership of documents.
Yeah, we should own and have full right of use for all.
Well, you, you do, the, the thing with architects of any kind is they're afraid that their plans are going to be taken and copied and used again by somebody else to
We, we don't intend to do that, to write that out, that's one, yeah.
What insurance is it you're looking for?
The, well, the whole package of insurance, the comprehensive, you know, we need a certificate of insurance that meets the village's requirements. I mean, we, I think we've got agreements that exist now that you've seen and approved that could be easily transitioned to cover this.
All right, so if I'm, I don't mean to do that. So, you can wait and ask her for a revised letter, and we'll communicate to her that these things need to be put into it, and then you can approve the revised letter, or you could apply, approve this agreement, subject to submission in language that's acceptable to the village board, additional insurance provision, provision, change in the language regarding ownership documents reflected the village's ownership of all documents generated, and changes to the submission of voucher invoices to indicate that you have 30 days from the date of approval. So, if you want to do the resolution, that way, you can approve it tonight, if you want to wait till the next meeting, we can get a revised letter from her, whatever the board wants.
I mean, I, I don't think we need to wait to get a revised letter from her, from my, my viewpoint, anyway. And that, you know, as long as, you know, we're, we're working with the document that we're providing as, as a contract.
Well, what she would do is she'll send a follow-up letter, saying, I understand the board has approved retention of me, per some of the terms of my May 6, 2022 letter, subject to, and she'll list the three things, please be advised, we modify it as follows, and then if you want to accept it that way, you can accept it that way. Other than that, you approve it, subject to submitting a whole new revised letter.
My, my, my suggestion was we authorize the mayor to proceed, but use a standard professional services contract.
Okay.
I mean, that's
I don't think you're going to get much more than what you got in this letter, in your standard professional form contract, but if you're more comfortable with that, it's fine. I don't, I'm sorry.
Why, why do you not, why do you feel that, why, you get that from all our professionals?
You do, but it has pretty much what's in here, plus if you want to have these three items added, it's fine. But I mean, if you want to have, it's fine, really.
So, nothing else is missing?
For our landscape architect, there's nothing significant that's missing. I mean, she's going to redesign your park, she's not building a sewage treatment plant, or a pump station, or something like that, it's, it's pretty straightforward. She's going to draw you up plans, and if you're confident that what's in here sets forth what you expect to get from her, that's what you're going to get from her. You got a $10,000 cap, got an hourly rate set, it's just not going to be anything all that different.
Now, what do you think the easiest way to go is? Have you, you've been in negotiations?
Yeah, I think the easiest way to go would be to accept that with modifications that we talked about. I just feel like it's going back to square one to ask for an entire new contract, I mean, it's
So, the motion would be revised to accept the proposal subject to
Submission of retention letter containing the additional terms that the village board is requiring.
Retention.
And there's three of them, as we
With Peter Fairweather, did we, didn't he make his own contract similar to that?
It was Peter's contract. And that's Steve revised.
Yeah.
Insurance, ownership of the documents.
Submission of voucher invoices to be paid within 30 days after approval.
After approval.
Okay.
Should I reread the motion?
Sure.
Oh, should you do?
Well, no, no.
Are we done? Oh.
I, I think it's a, a motion to amend.
Motion's been made and seconded, if somebody wants to make a motion to amend the motion, or you could withdraw it, to approve the contract, subject to the submission of a revised contract containing those changes, that's, that's what you would do. And then there'd be a vote on the amended motion, first motion to vote on it.
Okay, so motion to amend the motion to accept the proposal for landscape architectural services from Karen Arndt for the preparation of a landscape master plan for Veterans Memorial Park at a cost not to exceed $10,000, and authorize the mayor to sign the same with modifications to require acceptance of invoice before the 30 days sets in, to require insurance information, and the document ownership lies with the village.
Okay, just so we're clear, it's not a motion to amend the motion, you're making an amended motion.
I'm making an amended motion, thank you.
Okay. Second.
Second. Can you repeat that, Carl?
Lessons in government. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the 2022 summer recreation staff and salaries as per the enclosed list per the recommendation of Village of Warwick Recreation Director, Ron Entroine.
Okay. Do we have a second?
You go, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You know, I just want to say one thing, backing up to the motion on Karen Arndt. I really applaud you guys for really looking at this very carefully, and, you know, I don't think you're micromanaging, I think you're really looking at it and, and looking after the village and the, and a product that we will get and be proud of in working with a professional. So, I just want to say thank you.
And the professionals we deal with, I think, in most cases, we can trust impeccably, but you never know.
Well, we did have a, a very nice working relationship with her for Stanley Demming Park.
Right.
Hopefully, it'll be the same. Okay, sorry.
Motion to approve the budget modification request as per the village treasurer's memo dated May 12, 2022.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Park Avenue Elementary School to hold a second-grade picnic in Stanley Demming Park on June 6, 2022, with the rain date of June 7, 2022, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. Completed park permit and proof of proper insurance have been received.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to grant permission to Christ Church and Power, Power of Words Exposing Racism, to use Railroad Green to host a Juneteenth celebration on Saturday, June 18, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., with the event beginning at 11:00 a.m. and ending at 4:00 p.m., including use of 15 vendor parking spaces in the Chase Bank Parking Lot. This event is in coordination with the Union AME Church Community Health Fair. In the event, oh, Union AME must use their rain date of June 18, 2022. Completed park permit, proof of proper insurance, and security deposit have been received.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second discussion, please. With the request for 15 vendor parking spaces in the Chase Bank Parking Lot, do we, are, are we able to use that? I mean, I know it's a, it's a weekend, right, so I think we do have some kind of agreement with Chase to use the majority of those spaces, is that
Many of them are permitted, but we, we do, yeah.
So, we have, right now, at the moment, we have 12 permit parking spaces that are open. And Saturdays, it is that the exterior of the lot is a permit holder only, so the public can't park in those spaces anyway. So, the idea would be to give the Juneteenth coordinator specific permit spots that are empty. But the remaining spots, there's five right now, that's given out to PEX for the Bank Street Bridge. We expect, I think, right, that might be, that would be done by then, so then we would have 15 Chase permit spots to give them, which wouldn't take away from the public.
Okay, thank you.
And we did that for them last year?
We did. I believe last
I believe last year that they did hold it on a Sunday, so that was a little different.
Mm-hmm, yeah, definitely. That would've been crazy with a farmer's market, though. Anybody else? Anyone? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Motion to close Railroad Avenue on Saturday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, from six A M to six P M for the benefit of Christ Church and Power, Power of Words Exposing Racism, and to place sixteen no-parking bags on the meters of Railroad Avenue beginning at six A M.
Second. Um, who's gonna place the bags? We're gonna give them to the the organization and they will take care of that?
Yes, they'll sign them out with Kathy the day before.
Great. Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the proposal for engineering services from Barton and La Judas dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, for grant administration services for the village watershed land acquisition, water quality improvement program grant, and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the master services agreement with Barton and La Judas for a not-to-exceed amount of five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have this one?
Yeah, do you wanna do that?
Oh, you want me to do it?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to accept funding in the amount of four thousand dollars from the New York State Office of Children and Family Services Youth Development Program through the Orange County Youth Bureau for the twenty twenty-two Village of Warwick Recreation Project for Youth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me ask, what 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 is that? I was not, I saw this um this addendum to the agenda, but this um, what is this funding and what is it for?
It's uh it's funding our park program.
Oh.
And the resolution is part of their grant process. It's required for payment.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um so, reports.
Sarah, will me?
Yeah, Sarah, with you.
Uh, first item that I'll mention is the Bank Street Bridge. It's continuing to come along. The expectation is that uh it will be completed prior to Memorial Day um and and I'll assume open at the same time. Um there, uh, one of the sidewalks has been in and the other one should be following shortly. Then they're gonna have to mill and pave um from Main Street to the bridge and then from the bridge to the beginning, approximately the beginning of the uh Pizzlerick Store building. So um that's coming along, happy to say. Um also, um this uh Saturday is the Repair Cafe. Um it's being held at the Senior Center at the Town Hall Complex, uh one thirty-two Kings Highway from ten A M to two P M, and it's an opportunity, if you don't already know about it, to bring any of your uh broken items that are in need of repair to the repair coaches and they will assist you um with uh those repairs. And they're covering mechanical, electrical, um laptops, tablets, cell phones, bikes, jewelry, wooden things, clothing, home textiles, soft toys, uh knife and tool sharpening. There's a limit of two items per person and um masks are going to be required unless circumstances change. And they're asking that you bring a non-perishable box or can as a donation to the food pantry.
Okay, thank you. Carly?
Oh, okay. Um, so I I have a couple uh things to report. So last week I met with the Office of um the Orange County Office of Tourism and Film. It was a really positive meeting. Uh, we talked about um economic development and tourism in the village as well as uh the film policy and permit process. The town of Montgomery is also looking to update their um process. And um I also had a conversation with the City of Newburgh about sort of best practices and how, what their relationship with the film industry looks like and how their code works. And um it sounds like things are very positive for them. And and so what we discussed is that it probably makes sense for us to update alongside the town of Montgomery. It's also beneficial because um the Office of the the Orange County Office of Tourism and Film and, well, the Film Office and specifically is looking to provide sort of concierge services and really kind of facilitate uh the relationships between the film industry and the local uh communities to kind of maximize the positive relationships while minimize disruptions. And so having some um some synchronicity between the way we do things can, you know, be helpful. Um, also, um I heard that the bocce ball courts got started.
Yes, yes.
That's good to hear. Um, we have a virtual suggestion box and a real suggestion box now. And we got our first suggestion today, which was pretty cool. Um, and then uh finally, Hello Warwick Valley, we had a steering committee meeting on May fifth. That steering committee meets um quarterly and in case folks don't know, it's um the steering committee consists of representatives from the four chambers, some nonprofits, as well as the three villages and the town elected officials. And um the steering committee meets quarterly on ways to kind of increase community connectivity to all of the things that um we have to do here in the Warwick Valley. Oh, and then one more thing, um, if if community members would like their home or their property to be considered for filming, there's a database that um that they can access directly on um the Office of Tourism and Film website. They can submit their property and then be considered. Um and then there's a small, I guess, fee that folks get for that. Barry made me aware of that.
That's cool. That's great. Corey, do you have any?
Uh, just an event happening this Wednesday for the Warwick Historical Society um in conjunction with the Florida Historical Society. Uh, they are holding a hands-on history walking tour of our friends at the Village of Florida. It's a meet at seven P M behind the Florida Village Hall, thirty-three South Bain Street in Florida. And enjoy hearing some stories of the buildings, structures, industries, and residents who have inhabited the main street of this charming village. The walkabout will last just over an hour and cover just over a mile of distance. It's not recommended for young children and those who cannot stand for an hour. The guided history tour is free, family-friendly, and reservations are recommended by calling eight four five nine eight six three two three six.
Great. That's good. Come?
Okay, um, we have a few openings on some of our boards. Um, we have put out uh um an ad for some of these positions, um I believe in the advertiser. So we are seeking um multiple candidates to speak with um for one alternate position on the planning board. This person would have uh voting power when um a full-time planning board member or a regular planning board member cannot make the meeting. Um, so the expectation is that the alternate planning board member would come to all the meetings and really be as engaged as every other planning board member. Um, so if you're interested, please uh reach out to Village Hall. Secondly, we are seeking for a a member for the zoning board. Um, we have one of our zoning board members um move over to the planning board recently. So we're trying to backfill that position as well. Um, so that's for planning and zoning. Um, as far as the the technology report here in Village Hall, um, we are operating on really an antiquated phone system. So it was budgeted for, we do have phones arriving um shortly. I'm not exactly sure when it's gonna happen. But what that'll do is fix some of the connectivity issues that we've experienced with the internet and phones that were-
Combined.
Combined, connected. Um, that'll, that should also lower the cost to support 'cause it seemed to be one of the top um support calls we had made. Um, that'll also allow us to remove an outdated switch that's not even supported by the vendor anymore, right? So from a security perspective, it's good to uh remove that. That's all. Um, oh, one more, one more thing, as I guess the alternate to the uh Public Works Ops. Um, since Mike, that you are here, um, I just wanna recognize that we had this old salt barn with this um leaky roof, right? And I know that um we put out and we're asking for bids for contractors to replace that so we can keep the equipment, right, from being weathered. Um, I just wanna recognize that 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 your crew went above and beyond and used their own, their own skills, right, to replace that roof, really with just the cost of material.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I spoke to some of them. They, you know, they couldn't even run a compressor, so no pneumatic nail guns. They were up there with good old hammer and nails, so-
Absolutely.
I just wanna say, great job.
Thank you.
And it really saved the village some money, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
And that's all for me.
Mike, could I, could I ask you just to give us an update on Orchard and Elm Street?
Uh, Orchard and Elm Street will begin May twenty-third, weather permitting, uh milling. Uh, we're gonna mill from on Orchard Street from Oakland Avenue to the intersection area of Elm and Welling, and all of the entirety of Elm Street will be milled. Uh, then we're gonna put down some material to try to repack those roads and get back a base because there is no base on either one of those roads, which is the cause of many of our problems. Uh, a glass line fiber will be installed on Orchard Street to try to take away all of the inflow of water.
Well, and differential settlement, yeah.
Okay, engineering terms. And then we will pave uh with a binder and a top course, bringing everything right back to non-third world country existence. You were waiting for it. Hopefully it'll be done in eight days.
But but I uh also wanna say thank you to the men. I mean, this time of year is, I mean, it's like running. It's, I mean, you you guys are doing so many different things on so many levels, you know, getting ready for um the uh maker's market this past weekend or, you know, making sure the flower pots are ready to be planted. And, you know, people have no idea of all the details and uh, you know, hard work and how few men are actually doing that work throughout this entire village. Um, going back to Elm Street, digging up ancient railroad tracks that were buried because they didn't remove things in those days, they just buried them.
You want to get rid of it?
Yeah, so, uh, so I just wanna say thank you for your leadership and for the work that the men are doing.
You got it, sir. You got a good group of guys. They're doing well.
They are, yeah. Um, we have a work session uh hopefully on Friday. And I, is everybody in agreement with that or?
We have one on Wednesday, too, right?
No.
No.
Oh, I thought it was Wednesday.
No, oh.
Only two of the members of the board are, no, no. So what happened is that, yes, the work session is scheduled for this Wednesday at eight thirty, um but there was a conflict, uh scheduling conflict, and so that was suggested to reschedule. Just this happened just today uh to possibly Friday, if if you could make it. I think that's what we have to try to, try to figure out.
What time?
Before noon on Friday.
Yeah, any time that works for you all. We were thinking Friday because it seemed to be the day that some of the other trustees tend to come in.
The only thing is that Sadie won't be available on on Friday. Uh, or, uh, Carly, you had available Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, I'm also free Thursday afternoon.
So ten on Friday would be ideal for me.
It's fine for me.
Thursday afternoon, I'd have to leave probably around two thirty, so I can do it ahead of that.
But what about Friday?
Friday morning?
Okay.
Friday ten A M?
Friday, ten.
Okay.
That's great. And um the other thing, and we'll post it, uh, the listening session uh will be also advertised as a work session in the event that multiple trustees arrive and uh wanna participate. So, um, that's how we'll handle that.
Which we hope you will.
Yes, yes. Uh, so final comments from the floor?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. My name's Nora Gorbich. For those of you that don't know me, and I'm the Executive Director of the Warwick Historical Society. Thank you for approving our event tonight, the G W Day Five K. We're really excited. With your permission, I'd like to pass out our annual reports from the Historical Society this year. You're welcome. We just celebrated our hundred and sixteenth anniversary.
Thank you, Nora.
You're welcome. And I'm very, very pleased and proud of our organization. We have a um strategic plan that we worked on-
Thank you.
Over the COVID nineteen crisis, we took that opportunity to go inward and reorganize our organization and our nonprofit a little bit. We've emerged with what I think is an exciting mission statement. It's very action-oriented. Um, we are preserving, sharing, and celebrating the history of the town of Warwick. And uh, this is something our organization's been doing for over a century. And I just think that it's nice to introduce what we do to you in a new way because we kind of are a new and a bold organization, so everything all goes new again. Um, you may know that our executive offices are going to be going in across the street at the Eighteen Town House, so I'm really pleased about that. However, that does not change where our headquarters are. Headquarters will still be the A W Buckby Center, 'cause that is the hub of activity for the Historical Society. If you haven't been there, I'd love to invite you to come and see our exhibits, see our departments. We have an archive department upstairs with, um, excuse me, thousands of items uh dating back to sixteen ninety-nine. It's the oldest deed that we have in the archive department. In our clothing and textile department, we have about eighteen hundred garments that go back to seventeen ninety. And um our volunteers spend an average of four thousand five hundred hours a year working in our departments. I'm the only full-time employee. There's one part-time employee. So this is really a volunteer-led organization, and I'm so proud to say that we are two and a half years in the black without dipping into in our investments or our reserves, and we have a goal to become self-sustainable by twenty twenty-five. So um it's a pleasure to introduce the new Warwick Historical Society to all of you. Um, I'd love you to come see our buildings, our tours, our exhibits. In addition to the Five K that thank you again for um approving this evening, on that afternoon, July twenty-third, we'll have uh free public open house tours from twelve to three at a select number of Warwick Historical Society properties, including, we hope, the new executive offices. So hopefully by then, we'll be moved in across the street, we'll be neighbors. And um we also have a lot of more, a lot more events coming up. There is a Shakespeare Festival coming up on June third, fourth, and fifth. And that's where with the Greenwood Lake Theater Company, we're going to do a week of Bard at Barrett's, which I'm excited about, too. Um, instead of Broadway at Barrett's that week, I think they're gonna do Bard at Barrett's that week. So we'll have little one or two-minute monologues over there. We're still working out the details for that. Uh, Wine, Cheese, and Jazz is coming up across the street. That's one of our fundraisers. We're planning our biggest fundraiser, the Party in the Park. Um, as Corey mentioned, thank you, Corey. Our Hands-on History program continues. This Wednesday, we're meeting at uh the Florida Village Hall and doing a tour of the beautiful, charming village of Florida. June first, we're meeting at the Eighteen Town House, and we're going down Main Street and down Railroad Avenue with the Village of Historian, Village of Warwick Historian, Ivy Tullin. And then on June eighth, we'll be walking down the Village of Greenwood Lake with the Village Historian down there. And that will conclude this year's Hands-on History program, but it was a huge success. And thank you so much for partnering with us because it it's, their people are clamoring for it. We're getting great turnouts. We've had about a hundred people that we've entertained so far and educated at just four programs. So it's really a fun adventure into a little bit of adult education. And um we're working in partnership with a lot of educators and people in the community that have a lot that they wanna give back to the community as well. I wondered if you might have any questions for me, further questions about the G W Day Five K or anything that you may have heard. I'd be happy to tell you what our properties are. You may not know everyone that we own, but I can talk to talk about the Historical Society, so we don't wanna necessarily do that to you. Um, but really, thank you for all that you are doing for, um, to help our organization. We really love working in partnership with the village. Thank you to the D P W for helping us with our fencing and our tree issues when we had those and when we had the park, the car in the park.
Oh, yeah, that's interesting, too, yeah.
Because we, I don't know if you all know that there was a, an accident in Lewis Park just a few weeks ago. And unfortunately, a woman had a medical condition and she ended up upside down and flipping her car in the park. And the D P W came out and helped us clear the, clear the tree and the work that fell. Um, any questions?
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
And I wanna say that that Mary Ann did, was a great leader as president of of the Historical Society. And now Jennifer is is going to, I think, be excellent as well.
I think our our board is strong. We um, we don't have more, we have fewer members. Two members came off, Jeremy Havens and Mary Ann Knight. Uh, well, Mary Ann is, she's the immediate past president, but um Jeremy Havens and Greg Keys came off of the board, but we still have fifteen members of our board. They're just kind of shifting in their responsibilities and their roles, so it feels like we're setting Jennifer up for success. It's going to be a a good, a good presidency, and she's got a lot of great ideas for increasing membership. And she's got a lot of great ideas for increasing membership as well as working further into the community and developing and providing what we can do for services for you all.
That's great.
So, if you have an idea, let me know. Because we are all ears and we'll try almost anything. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any more comments from the board? And we have no executive session, so could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, move?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to say, great job.
Thank you.
And it really saved the village some money, so thank you.
You got it.
Thanks.
And that's all for me.
Mike, could I, could I ask you just to give us an update on Orchard and Elm Street?
Orchard and Elm Street will begin May 23rd, weather permitting, milling. We're gonna mill from, on Orchard Street from Oakland Avenue to the intersection area of Elm and Welling. And all of the entirety of Elm Street will be milled. Then we're gonna put down some material to try to repack those roads and get back a base because there is no base on either one of those roads, which is the cause of many of our problems. A glass line fiber will be installed on Orchard Street to try to take away all of the inflow of water.
Well, and differential settlement, yeah.
Okay. Engineer in terms. And then, we will pave with binder and a top course, bringing everything right back to non-third world country existence. You were waiting for it. Hopefully, it'll be done in eight days.
But I also want to say thank you to the men. I mean, this time of year is, I mean, it's like running. It's, I mean, you guys are doing so many different things on so many levels, you know, getting ready for the makers market this past weekend or, you know, making sure the flower pots are ready to be planted. And, you know, people have no idea of all the details and, you know, hard work and how few men are actually doing that work throughout this entire village. Going back to Elm Street, digging up ancient railroad tracks that were buried because they didn't remove things in those days, they just buried them.
You must have get rid of it.
Yeah. So, so I just want to say thank you for your leadership and for the work that the men are doing.
You got it, sir. You got a good group of guys, they're doing well.
They are, yeah. We have a work session hopefully on Friday. And is everybody in agreement with that or?
We have one on Wednesday, too, right?
No.
No.
Oh, I thought it was Wednesday.
No. Oh.
Only two of the members of the board are, no. So, what happened is that, yes, the work session is scheduled for this Wednesday, 8:30, but there was a conflict, scheduling conflict. And so, that was suggested to reschedule, just, this happened just today, to possibly Friday, if, if you could make it. I think that's what we have to try to, try to figure out.
What time?
Before noon on Friday?
Yeah, anytime that works for you all. We were thinking Friday because it seemed to be the day that some of the other trustees tend to come in.
The only thing is that Sadie won't be available on Friday. Or Carly, you had available Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, I'm also free Thursday afternoon.
So, 10 on Friday would be ideal for me.
That's fine for me.
Thursday afternoon, I'd have to leave probably around 2:30, so I can do it ahead of that.
But what about Friday?
Friday morning?
Okay.
Friday, 10 a.m.?
Friday, 10.
Okay.
That's great. And the other thing, and we'll post it, the listening session will be also advertised as a work session in the event that multiple trustees arrive and want to participate. So, that's how we'll handle that.
Which we hope you will.
Yes. Yes. So, final comments from the floor?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. My name's Nora Gervich. For those of you that don't know me, and I'm the Executive Director of the Warwick Historical Society. Thank you for approving our event tonight, the GW Day 5K. We're really excited. With your permission, I'd like to pass out our annual reports from the Historical Society this year.
You're welcome.
We just celebrated our 116th anniversary.
Thank you, Nora.
You're welcome. And I'm very, very pleased and proud of our organization. We have a strategic plan that we worked on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Over the COVID-19 crisis, we took that opportunity to go inward and reorganize our organization and our nonprofit a little bit. We've emerged with what I think is an exciting mission statement. It's very action-oriented. We are preserving, sharing, and celebrating the history of the Town of Warwick. And this is something our organization's been doing for over a century. And I just think that it's nice to introduce what we do to you in a new way because we kind of are a new and a bold organization. So, everything all goes new again. You may know that our executive offices are going to be going in across the street at the 18-Town House, so I'm really pleased about that. However, that does not change where our headquarters are. Headquarters will still be the A.W. Buckby Center because that is the hub of activity for the Historical Society. If you haven't been there, I'd love to invite you to come and see our exhibits, see our departments. We have an archive department upstairs with, excuse me, thousands of items dating back to 1699. It's the oldest deed that we have in the archive department. In our clothing and textile department, we have about 1,800 garments that go back to 1790. And our volunteers spend an average of 4,500 hours a year working in our departments. I'm the only full-time employee, there's one part-time employee. So, this is really a volunteer-led organization. And I'm so proud to say that we are two and a half years in the black without dipping into our investments or our reserves. And we have a goal to become self-sustainable by 2025. So, it's a pleasure to introduce the new Warwick Historical Society to all of you. I'd love you to come see our buildings, our tours, our exhibits, in addition to the 5K that, thank you again for approving this evening. On that afternoon, July 23rd, we'll have free public open house tours from 12 to 3 at a select number of Warwick Historical Society properties, including, we hope, the new executive offices. So, hopefully by then, we'll be moved in across the street, we'll be neighbors. And we also have a lot of more, a lot more events coming up. There is a Shakespeare Festival coming up on June 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And that's where with the Greenwood Lake Theater Company, we're going to do a week of Bard at Barrett's, which I'm excited about, too. Instead of Broadway at Barrett's that week, I think they're gonna do Bard at Barrett's that week. So, we'll have little one or two-minute monologues over there. We're still working out the details for that. Wine, Cheese &amp; Jazz is coming up across the street, that's one of our fundraisers. We're planning our biggest fundraiser, the Party in the Park. As Cory mentioned, thank you Cory, our Hands-on History program continues. This Wednesday, we're meeting at the Florida Village Hall and doing a tour of the beautiful, charming village of Florida. June 1st, we're meeting at the 18-Town House. And we're going down Main Street and down Railroad Avenue with the Village of Historian, Village of Warwick historian, Ivy Tullin. And then, on June 8th, we'll be walking down the Village of Greenwood Lake with the Village historian down there. And that will conclude this year's Hands-on History program, but it was a huge success. And thank you so much for partnering with us because it's, their people are clamoring for it. We're getting great turnouts. We've had about 100 people that we've entertained so far and educated at just four programs. So, it's really a fun adventure into a little bit of adult education. And we're working in partnership with a lot of educators and people in the community that have a lot that they want to give back to the community as well. I wondered if you might have any questions for me, further questions about the GW Day 5K or anything that you may have heard. I'd be happy to tell you what our properties are. You may not know everyone that we own, but I can talk to talk about the Historical Society, so we don't want to necessarily do that to you. But really, thank you for all that you are doing for, to help our organization. We really love working in partnership with the village. Thank you to the DPW for helping us with our fencing and our tree issues when we had those and when we had the park, the car in the park.
Oh, yeah, that's interesting, too, yeah.
Because we, I don't know if you all know that there was an accident in Lewis Park just a few weeks ago. And unfortunately, a woman had a medical condition and she ended up upside down and flipping her car in the park. And the DPW came out and helped us clear the, clear the tree and the work that fell. Any questions?
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you for everything you do.
Excellent job, yeah.
Thank you.
And I want to say that Mary Ann did, was a great leader as President of the Historical Society. And now Jennifer is, is going to, I think, be excellent as well.
I think our, our board is strong. We, we don't have more, we have fewer members. Two members came off, Jeremy Havens and Mary Ann Knight. Well, Mary Ann is, she's the immediate past president, but Jeremy Havens and Greg Keyes came off of the board. But we still have 15 members of our board. They're just kind of shifting in their responsibilities and their roles. So, it feels like we're setting Jennifer up for success. It's going to be a good, a good presidency. And she's got a lot of great ideas for increasing membership as well as working further into the community and developing and providing what we can do for services for you all.
That's great.
So, if you have an idea, let me know. Because we are all ears and we'll try almost anything. But, thank you.